As far as you know, they're on.
They are on.
I don't have a red light unless I talk, so I guess, I'm not sure if they are or not. All right. We'll call to order the regular meeting of the common council of the city of Platteville for Tuesday, March 27, 2018. We will start with roll call.
I had a little testing and I forgot to turn the TV back down.
Okay.
It's like a 10-second delay.
But it is interesting to know that there's a delay in case there's any equipment failures or -- We'll get this right eventually. Or bad words. All right, so I repeat what I just said because the TV wasn't on. Called to order the regular meeting of the common council of the city of Platteville for Tuesday, March 27, 2018, and we will start with roll call.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
Don Francis.
Here.
Barbara Stockhausen.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
Tom Knoll.
Here.
All right, the first item this evening is a special presentation, the Tourism Report. Kathy Kopp, Director of the Platteville Regional Chamber.
I'm dealing with a little bit of a head cold, so you'll have to excuse me if I don't quite sound like myself. I am going to keep my comments fairly brief, but I did want to make a point of coming to give a short presentation to the city council on tourism activity for 2017. Apologize for not being able to make it last month, but I do have it documented that the report was turned in on time. Just wasn't able to get here to give a little report on it. The packet of information that we delivered is very thorough, we think, for the activities over the year. The, for 2017, part of the packet, we included what we call our action plan for the year that is put together by the chamber's tourism council and then approved by the chamber board, then it's brought to the city's tourism committee for approval, and that's basically what we operate on for setting goals and the plan for our footprint for what we're going to do for the year. So that was included in there for 2017 with an update of exactly what we did with that. We also included our action plan for 2018 that spells out our roadmap for the current year, and then we also included a copy of the chamber's strategic plan for 2018 that, again, was approved by the chamber board and the chamber's tourism council because one of the sections deals with tourism. So just real quickly, our five main goals for tourism as a tourism entity and chamber, to maintain and host the Travel Wisconsin Welcome Center, continue to support outdoor recreation in and around the Platteville community, build a better, a stronger community and regional network to enable the chamber to continue to promote all Platteville and regional events and museums such as museums, regional events and attractions such as museums, Nor Gallery, Stone Cottage, and Center for the Arts events. Also to continue and enhance Ag Tourism initiatives and a series of events and promotions. And then a large one for 2018 is to host the premiere for the 500th episode for Discover Wisconsin that we're very excited about, and I'm going to talk about that in just a minute. So those are our major goals for 2018, keeping in mind that a large part of what we do are events. So we have the Third Annual Farm, Day on the Farm in June, we have the Third Annual Southwest Music Festival in July, and then we also have the Third Annual Fall Harvest Table Dinner. Now, those are part of what the events are. I mean, obviously, we do Hometown Festival Week, we're involved with Fourth of July, we have the Historic Reenactment, we're involved in Dairy Days. There are many, many activities throughout the year that we assist with. One of the things in the packet that I included because the Department of Tourism puts together an economic impact report every year, so the information that we currently are going on is 2016 information. The National Tourism Week is the first full week of May, that is when they will be releasing the report for 2017. The good news is that in 2016, they do it by county, one of the breakdowns is by county, we were up almost 3%, which was right at or a little above the average statewide. So that was really encouraging. By every indication, we're even stronger in 2017. One of the reports that we have that verifies that is fourth quarter room tax report came in, and room tax was up significantly in the fourth quarter of 2017, and that report came in in February. So usually, fourth quarter is pretty quiet, so for it to have a significant increase over the year before and every year before that is really, really good news. So the budget, the revenue that we operated on that came in for the portion it comes to the tourism entity was $87,169. The breakdown in the report gives all of the expenses. The total expenses against that income was $91,523, so it was actually a deficit, but that is not unusual. The chamber has historically always assisted and been very active in tourism promotion, so while the numbers show it being in the red, the chamber, that was, it was covered by the chamber, so. But I think, all in all, 2017 was a fantastic year. Again, I can't wait for the numbers to come out from the Department of Tourism, but the Department of Tourism unofficially has told us that the county numbers, the economic impact for tourism promotion is over $44 million countywide. And that was, that was up by almost 3% in 2017 over 20, 2015 over, no, 2016 over 2015, right. And conservatively, we can count half of that, conservatively, for impact on Platteville because we are the largest community, we have the largest number of restaurants, largest number of retail, largest lodging in the county. So when you look at tourism industry in Platteville, it's very strong, definitely over $20 million a year of impact. So moving along to 2018, we have, I want to specifically hone in on the fact that we have gone through a branding process as far as tourism promotion. We're been wondering, and it's always come up, well, who are we and what do we look like and what are we really promoting? So through a process that we've gone through, basically, for the last two years, we have arrived at the conclusion that as far as tourism promotion purposes, we are Ag Tourism. We're hiking, biking, it's outdoor recreation, it's agriculture, it's farmers' markets, it's farm-to-table dinners, it's the Ag Expo that we do that showcases things that people can come to this area and experience. So with that, the debut of our Discover Wisconsin episode, that episode, we contracted with almost two years ago, they filmed the entire year of 2017. The theme is "Our Roots Run Deep," and it is based on Ag Tourism. So the good news is, is that we get to have another premiere, and you are all invited. It is Monday, May 14. I'm just gonna, a little save the date card for you. It's gonna be from 5:00 to 8:00, and we're gonna be at The Barn, which is an outdoor event venue out near the M off of County B, and it is free, there's going to be food, there's going to be music. We want absolutely everybody to come out. We have a specific or a very special invite list that we are putting together in inviting local officials, regional officials, state, and federal, because this is the 500th episode of Discover Wisconsin, which is a true landmark for them, so it's going to be a major celebration, and we just hope that everybody will come out and support that. And the presentation, I think, is, because it shows a little bit about the history of Platteville, so the, we've showcased the museum in there, it's a beautiful look at what we are, and I just hope that everybody comes out and celebrates that. So the impact of that is going to be significant. The television episode premieres on TV on May 19 and 20, and it will be rotated off and on for the next three years. So it'll be, I'm really excited about it. We are anticipating a very large crowd, so we do hope that you come and join us. We're definitely very excited about it, and while Ag Tourism may not be the components for every marketing angle for the community, when it comes to tourism and what the opportunities and assets we have here to bring people here, it's definitely that. So I think we are going to be showcasing what we truly are. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a comment and a question. First of all, Kathy, congratulations. I think this is the first time I've seen you since you received the Governor's Award from the Department of Tour, well, what?
Department of Tourism, the Governor's.
I was like, is it called the Department of Tourism after?
Yeah.
Because I thought it was DOT, and then it was like, well, no, just a minute.
It is, but it's the other DOT.
It's the other DOT, so congratulations on that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And then you had a question.
Then I did have a question. Do you post, yeah, I've kind of looked at the chamber's website, do you put your strategic plan and this information on your website? Because I wasn't, I mean, to be honest, I haven't searched every entry you have, but I have looked, and I don't really see it.
It's supposed to be, but we are transitioning our website right now, so some of the pieces may be silent, so you may not be able to see them. But it is, we're going, undergoing another transition to make it much more user-friendly and simpler and cleaner looking.
Seems to be what happens with websites. We're always transitioning. All right, well, I was just asking because I had, I had looked for it and I just couldn't find it, so, thank you.
Any other questions?
For motels, do you take any information as far as reason for stay? Do they record anything and then turn that in?
That's a good question. We have tried different things. We do that in the Welcome Center when we, and we work with the lodging properties when we know there are major events. For example, we know when the NCAA tournament games were held here a number of weeks ago, the hotels were all full, and we made special arrangements with them for people that were looking for rooms because we got a lot of calls. So we know that event specifically brought people, and we know that our bigger events like the Historic Reenactment, and yes, even Dairy Days does bring people in that stay overnight, and definitely the Day on the Farm, the Southwest Music Festival. But in our Welcome Center, we do, we try to capture that. Not everybody's really excited to tell us, so some people just want to keep that, you know, they're just passing through or whatever, but, yeah, we do our best to find out because that helps us market both activities and locations.
But it's not done at the motels.
When, when we know there's a specific event, we will specifically work with the hotels and ask them to help us with that, so they're very open to do that, but we don't do it on a regular basis.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
The first item is a public hearing regarding ordinance 1802, and we will start with staff presentation.
Okay, staff is making a recommendation to make a couple changes to the zoning ordinance. Section 2205-2 and 2205-3 are portions of the zoning ordinance related to residential development. The R2 district is one and two family, the R3 is multifamily. They both allow duplex residential as an allowable use, and there's a, you know, a list of requirements that need to be met in order for that use to be in those districts. But then there's also a section that allows exceptions to those rules, and that's the area where I'm proposing to make a change. Specifically, the ordinance, as it's written, says that there's, if you have an existing lot with 12,000 square feet of area that has an existing structure on it, you can ignore the other dimensional requirements that are normally applicable to duplexes in those districts. Normally, a lot has to have 12,000 square feet of area, 100 feet of frontage, so with that exception, you can ignore the 100 feet of frontage requirement. You can ignore some of the setbacks if you're adding on to an existing structure, as long as you don't make it more non-conforming than it currently is. So this is a much different playing field, so to speak, than if you have a vacant R2 lot where you've got to meet all those requirements. So the, it seems to me there, it should be a distinction between existing situation and new construction situation, but this exception kind of muddies the waters because it does allow an addition to be made to an existing structure. And we have had a situation where we had a small, single-family structure that was added on to to create an additional unit. It was, the addition was as large, as large as the existing structure, so it was allowed because of this exception, but to me, it seems like it's kind of a loophole, for lack of a better word, on what the normal requirements are for a duplex situation. So my proposal is very simple, it would just be eliminating the last part of that last sentence. The sentence currently reads that an existing structure is eligible for this exemption only so long as no additions are made to the structure that would result in an increase to the non-conforming nature of the structure. I would just eliminate that last part, so it applies as long as you're not, as long as no additions are made to the structure. So it is a little bit cleaner distinction between existing situation and new construction. So that's my proposal. The Plan Commission did review this at their January meeting, actually, and recommended approval. So if anybody has any questions, I would love to answer them.
Questions, anyone?
I have some comments.
All right.
Can you understand me and hear me? I think we should be encouraging the use of houses for single-family housing. Section F and G before us tonight, if passed, will continue to promote, encourage, the conversion of single-family houses to duplexes. The original sections F and G were passed in the '70s. At that time, the duplex, duplexes were a conditional use in the R2. So my recollection is that people got tired of changing as far as meeting the requirements or getting a variance for the requirements, the dimensional requirements, and so they passed F and G, and then along with it, well, they passed F and G, which is dealing with existing structures. So as the university grew, more houses were converted to duplexes to meet the demand for rental housing. So the passage of the original sections F and G made it easier to convert single-family to duplexes, didn't have to meet the dimensional requirements which are given in the codebook. What are the, what have been the results of this usage of F and G and making duplexes specified use in the R2? Well, the results have been, some of the conversions have been very good, however, some conversions have not been good. Parking issues, thrash, overcrowding, lawn care, et cetera. These things in general have given the city a black eye as to general appearance due to some of the rentals. Now, I say that some single-family dwellings also give the city a black eye, but I'm stressing here especially the conversion of duplexes. Elimination of sections F and G, which I would like to see, elimination, elimination of sections F and G would not prevent the conversion to duplexes. It's just that the dimensional requirements would be the met, would have to be met. The goal of elimination of F and G sections is to encourage more affordable housing, and this would help through less competition for these houses to go into rentals. We've talked about in past times, past meetings, that we don't have enough affordable housing. There's, there's demand for affordable housing, but unfortunately, a lot of these houses go into becoming duplexes. In fact, some of these houses never get on the market for people to be able to look at and buy as they go into the rental market. Another point I wanted to mention here is that inspection of rental property will become more difficult to continue to conduct as the governor will likely sign the landlord bill. Now, I had brought that here somewhere, the landlord bill. If you're not familiar with it, the city manager has briefly described it. It says the city would not be able to charge inspection fees if no violation is found for a property, or if the violation is corrected within certain timeframe, I think there was 30 days. So this is going to impact Platteville as far as the funds that we can collect to help carry out the inspection program. And my point on this situation is that if we get in more duplexes, we're going to have more places that may need inspection, more that need a critical look, so that it's going to be more difficult for the staff to get this work done if we want to continue this type of work, the inspection. So what I'm asking here, what I'm suggesting is to eliminate sections F and G, which talk about the existing structures, because I think sections F and G do not help the city, they have not helped the city. We've seen that through experience, and that, I hope you would take this into consideration, that these sections have not been helpful. So I'd like to see this, this table as far as sections F and G. Now, as I said before, people can still make a property, existing property into a duplex if they meet the dimensional requirements. With section F and G, what they say is that you only have to meet the square footage, and I believe it says also you don't even have to meet the frontage requirement, which is 100 feet. So it means that narrow lots can be made into duplexes, and I don't think that's a good way to go. So those are my comments as far as sections F and G. They're not good for the city, they're put into usage back in the '70s, they've been carried forward, and we've seen that they're not good. Thank you.
All right. We had the staff presentation, and again, I have eight things to go through here. Applicant statement, which is the city. Public statements in favor. I didn't have anyone fill out a green piece of paper, they're back there on that table if you'd like to speak on something that we're discussing this evening. Public statements against, or public statements in general. So council discussion, we've heard from Councilor Killian. Other discussion by the council on this ordinance-proposed amendment.
Joe, this has come before the Plan Commission, correct?
Yes.
Were similar concerns raised in the Plan Commission relative to remainder of this, the other parts of this ordinance that Councilor Killian referred to?
The Plan Commission did not raise any concerns about the rest of the section, that I recall. I lean to remember otherwise.
No, I don't.
I don't remember.
And what, and were these concerns then expressed?
No, I don't think there were any concerns.
There weren't any concerns expressed.
Well, I've tried to give a broad picture of what is taking place.
I would say that I think it's true, some, in some instances, we have had, as Joe explained, a situation where the lot was big enough, and so someone added on to a house to make it a duplex, and it certainly did not complement the existing house. And I think that is one reason why I would be in favor of removing the non, removing the language that says you can make it non-conforming. I can see some advantages to having larger two-story homes with a lot of space. And I understand Mr. Killian's point, but at the same time, if some of the older two-story homes converted into duplexes, perhaps some of the single-family homes would not be used for income property because it would, it would have more duplex properties available. And I understand that the governor probably will sign the bill that Mr. Killian mentioned, and I certainly regret that that has gone forward. I think that the inspections that we've been doing in the city have been helpful, and this bill, if it's signed, will very much limit our potential for, once again, regulating, licensing, income property. But right now, we haven't really had a chance to discuss that portion of it. But I think if it's a 12,000-square-foot lot and the lot, the property owner would have to meet all the requirements for off-the-street parking and all the other requirements that are required. I mean, we know there are some larger, older two-story homes in town that have four and five and six bedrooms, and they're being used as a four-bedroom home if it's an income property, and we know in some cases, some more than four are living there. So again, if it was a legal duplex, and I'm getting a look from one of the people in the audience who isn't in favor, but I do think that it might take some pressure off the single-family homes, and that, that's my concern, because more and more single-family homes are being purchased to use as income property, so. Any other comments from the council?
Joe, could you just clarify? R2 is meant to be duplexes, right?
R2 is one and two family, so it does allow duplexes.
Duplexes.
As a specified use.
So converting to, so it's perfectly legal to do that because that's what an R2 is?
Correct, as long as the
Right.
Other requirements are met.
Right. So as long as it's zone R2, it can be, okay.
But, but, you have something else? But the crux of it is, is that you're allowing duplex in R2 when that existing structure does not meet the dimensional requirements. The only one that you're putting here is square footage. What if you have a long, narrow lot? What's that gonna do? You gonna park in the back of the house? Park on the side? That's what we're seeing now, sides, both sides, front of the house. You're not helping as far as making the best appearance. What's wrong with requiring a dimensional requirement? What's wrong with requiring the dimensional requirements?
We would still have requirements, Joe, regarding the parking and the amount of the lot that could actually be utilized for parking, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So even if it's a long, narrow lot, you still would have to abide by those rules?
That's correct.
And would you, and would you have to, uh, make it a hard surface lot?
Yes.
And do we have restrictions on parking in the front yard?
Well, yes, we do. They're a little bit different. R two and R three are both different, but there are regulations regarding that.
Well, as far as parking in the front yard, if we have restrictions, then why are people doing it?
That may be an enforcement issue rather than a
Well, there, most of it was pre-existing. But the, the R three does allow parking in the front yard. It just has restrictions on the maximum lot coverage for building and parking.
That's R three.
Correct.
Well, I, I sympathize with what, uh, Ken is saying. However, I don't know that by eliminating two sections at this time, we actually, uh, helped that problem. It probably would be, uh, a good idea for the plan commission to look at the entire ordinance and how it's written and come back with. But at this point, I would favor taking out the part that is allowing this addition, uh, as long as it doesn't make something non-conforming. But it, I mean, uh, I tend to agree that we have some properties that are looking less than desirable and making our city look less than desirable and perhaps a good read-through these 1970s ordinances would be in, uh, in line.
I have a question about this example that was given here. Uh, it says entirely new unit onto an existing single-family home to create a duplex. So that existing family home was conforming?
Yes.
To begin with?
Correct.
So it met dimensional requirements?
Except for the hundred feet of lot width, lot frontage.
So they, they followed the code to make a duplex. Now, is, are there more examples like this beyond the one?
There's the one that I was, could recall. There, there may have been others earlier that I was not aware of or could not remember.
Now, if we don't have many examples, then I don't, I don't think this is enough support. It says, um, a lot where this duplex was created had more than 12,000 square feet of area, but didn't have a hundred feet of frontage. So how, how could it pass the dimensional requirements if it didn't have a hundred feet of frontage, which is one of the requirements?
It was, met the requirements of 2205 to F. They had 12,000 square feet of area, so you could ignore the other dimensional requirements.
Well, to me, that, that in itself is, is, is reason for not allowing it. It didn't meet the 12,000 square, didn't meet the hundred, hundred feet.
That's what F says though, is that an existing structure which is used for any specified use or any conditional use, provided that it meets the minimum lot area requirements, and it did, shall be exempt from all other dimensional requirements. So that would have been, in that case, the hundred feet. It didn't meet the hundred feet frontage, but it met the 12,000 square feet.
Correct.
So they, therefore, they could add on to the house and that was what was done in that instance. So I think that that's what we're talking about here is the, 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 um, ability of someone to do that, to take in a single-family home in an R two zoned area and make it into a duplex and simply because it's 12,000 square feet.
By adding on a piece that's big
By adding on a non-conforming structure.
By adding on a non-conforming structure.
And, and that's the crux of the matter is a non-conforming structure. That, that would, that ability would be taken away. So if it was an existing structure and it was a two-story and it met the 12,000 square foot lot requirement, it could be conceivably converted into a duplex, but they could not add on to that building.
Right. It would have to be an internal remodeling conversion.
The building could not be added on to.
This is that, uh, meaning extensions such as, um, bay windows, those kinds of things?
Um, I, I would say if they're expanding the footprint, the square footage would not be allowed.
Would not be allowed. So they couldn't bump out an area. Okay.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, we would need a motion to close the public hearing.
I move we close the public hearing.
Outside.
We'll motion in a second and we'll vote on that.
Josh?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes, pardon me.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, common council action.
I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 1802 repealing and recreating sections 2205 to F and 2205 three G.
Do a second.
I'll second.
I move to table the motion. It can be considered so that this action can be considered by the plan commission.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table. We'll vote on that first.
Josh?
No.
Francis?
No.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
No.
Noel?
No.
Motion does not carry.
All right, we'll have a vote on the motion.
Which was to adopt the, which is to adopt the
Which is to adopt the proposed amendments.
Josh?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
No.
Killian?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Going on, our next is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer a separate discussion and action. A is council minutes from the March 13th, 2018 special and regular meetings. B is payment of bills. C is appointments to boards and commissions and this evening, I'm appointing Tom Taber with the council's approval to the Board of Appeals for ET zoning for a three-year term. D is licenses, temporary class B, uh, license to sell fermented malt beverages and wine to the Platteville Main Street Program for the Around the Corner Preview Party on Tuesday, April 3rd from seven, five until 7:00 PM. Also in our packet, uh, information about one-year and two-year operator licenses to sell or serve alcohol. E is run-walk permits. We have two, one is Kappa Delta Five for the International Education Honor Society on Saturday, April 7th at 10:00 AM. At, excuse me, the other one is Southwest Health for a 5K Nightingale Run on Friday, May 4th at 8:00 PM. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll just all move.
Do a second.
Second.
Motion in a second, we'll vote.
Josh?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, on to citizens' comments, observations, and petitions. We have two people who have asked to speak this evening for informational purposes only. The first is Rich Christiansen. If you could come up and give your name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Rich Christiansen and I live at 10 South Third Street. I'm here tonight to talk about inflated numbers and misleading information. Uh, but before I start on that top, on the topic I need to talk about, I have just three sentences to say about leased downtown parking, which is an action item, uh, on the agenda for later in the evening. I reread the six recommendations of the downtown parking task force that were presented last summer and I'm wondering why city staff and the common council are saying, quote, "The downtown parking task force recommends all overnight parking in city-owned parking lots in the downtown be converted to assigned parking," end quote. When downtown parking is improved by those 91 or 102 leased parking spaces, shouldn't the parties that are really responsible for this idea get the proper credit? Okay, moving on. There were three conclusions printed at the end of the 2017 Platteville Public Transportation Update, which was presented at the last common council meeting two weeks ago. Conclusion number one states, quote, "Taxi and bus had record ridership in 2017," end quote. Well, in 2016, 3,958 bus rides were provided to the general public. In 2017, 3,574 rides. That's a 9.7% decrease in bus rides provided to the general public. Conclusion number one certainly doesn't tell the whole story. Conclusion number two states, quote, "6.1% of bus riders were non-UWP students. The potential exists to grow ridership with additional marketing," end quote. Well, it's going on six years now, the last three years under the city's direction and three years under the university's direction before that, and the numbers are getting worse. As mentioned, a 9.7% decrease in non-UWP student bus ridership last year. Conclusion number three states, without, quote, "Without bus revenues, city taxpayers would need to increase support to the taxi in the amount of $39,000 to continue same service level," end quote. City staff has been inflating this number and misleading the public for three years. In the 2017 Platteville Public Transportation Update, city staff has inflated $9,447 to $39,000. Over three years, 2015 to 2017, about $30,000 has been, has been inflated to $106,000. Of greater concern is that the common council knew or should have known the public was being misled. On February 23rd, 2016, the common council received written questions and concerns about the 2015 Public Transportation Report. On February 14th, 2017, city staff and the Platteville Transit System Joint Committee, which includes a member of the common council, received questions and concerns about the 2016 Public Transportation Report. And now, for the third year in a row, city staff and the common council is being made aware that the public is being misled by inflated numbers and false information. I assume the common council has received the information I dropped off for them at City Hall. If you have any questions or comments, I will state and answer and explain when this meeting is over. And I assume the common council has received a copy of the March 22nd memo sent from city staff to the city manager. I wonder if you would look up the word gobbledygook in the dictionary, if you would find a picture of this memo. You know what? Forget about the information I sent you and certainly forget about this memo. All you need is the answer to one simple question. If there was only the taxi, would the, would the city receive a federal slash state grant in the range of 55 to 58% or would the, or would the city receive just a 47.8% grant? Well, as I said, this is the third year that the common council is being made aware of inflated numbers and misleading information in public transportation reports. And I can't wait to see what happens next. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make just a brief comment on, um, the work of the downtown parking task force. And while there were some initial recommendations that were made, I, I think, uh, Mr. Christiansen referenced in the summer, the task force met subsequent to that initial report to continue to vet issues that surfaced with respect to the issue and recommendations in preparation for the open house that was held in October.
Right. Uh, Jack Ludke was the other person that had asked to speak.
I'm here on a lighter note. Um, again, to follow up on Kathy Cop's excitement about, uh, being, uh, brought into the spotlight at Platteville, uh, with their party. The, uh, Main Street Program is also throwing a party and it's next Tuesday night in, uh, this building and it's to celebrate the, uh, showing of the preview of the Around the Corner episode that was filmed in Platteville during last summer. And the Around the Corner Program is, uh, shown on Wisconsin Public Television and covers, uh, people in a five-state area and we intend to use the CDs that are produced from that for continuing marketing our, our, uh, city of Platteville and what it has to offer communities for people who might want to relocate here with either their families or their businesses. The, uh, neat thing about this is that this program costs the community nothing. Uh, they came in and talked to your fellow citizens. They interviewed 14 different, uh, aspects of the community and each of those interviews are going to be incorporated into the party. Uh, we've had local sponsors pick up the cost of the party. So it's just a fun time. We want to invite the entire community and their families to come and enjoy food, some refreshments, and a preview starting at, uh, six o'clock. You can start coming. The doors will be open at five. Uh, John McGivern, who's the host of the program, will be here to answer questions. He'll be coming at about five o'clock and, uh, the preview will start at six and, uh, it will be in the auditorium downstairs. And, uh, we just think that it'll be a wonderful time for the citizens of Platteville to share with their fellow citizens the excitement of being seen on public television and, uh, put out there through five states in the upper Midwest. So, uh, again, five o'clock start Wednesday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, uh, April 3rd. I'm mentioning Wednesday because that's my birthday, so. The party is kind of a pre-party for Jack, if you will.
Will there be cake?
There will be cake from the Owl.
You'll have to bake it all.
No. Uh, Peggy at the Owl is going to, uh, provide cake. Uh, we have, uh, other cookies and so on coming from the Driftless Market and, uh, some, uh, food from Los Amigos. So, uh, it should be a good time for everybody. Any questions?
Yes, it's going to be a film, basically.
A what?
A film.
Yes, it is a film.
Okay, and, um, do they bring their own projector?
Uh, we're taking care of that here, yes.
I've noticed with the projector that we have, when you shine it from behind, it doesn't come out very distinct.
Uh.
Is that a matter of operation?
I am not technically schooled, Ken, uh, but we will take that into consideration. It's, uh, going to be the big inflated screen. Is that the one you're talking about?
Yes.
Uh, that can be filmed from, or be
Front or back?
From front and back.
Yes.
So they'll probably do a front, they're going to be testing it. They're sending the, uh, uh, program over to the person who has that screen. Uh, that'll be coming over tomorrow and so they'll be setting it up and testing it. But, uh, we want to, everybody to be able to see it. There are 400 and some seats in the auditorium. There are people in this community who have not been in the auditorium and, uh, we'd like them to come and see what it's like and, uh, it's really a jewel in downtown and in this building. And that's one reason we wanted to hold the, uh, preview here. Uh, it's important. And I don't know if any of you have seen the teaser promos on, uh, public television yet. They do feature the building here, uh, and talking about the party, so. Okay? Thank you.
Hopefully, everybody can make it. Tell your friends.
Vote first and then go to the party, right?
All right, those are the only individuals that had asked to speak under citizens' comments. I do have some other people, but it's about issues that we'll be discussing later, so I'll call you in on that end. So, reports in our packet, Water and Sewer Commission, Stockhausen, Killian, and Knoll.
No addition.
No addition.
Need to say, routes would be Westerby, nothing to add there. Parks, Forestry, and Recreation, Francis?
Nothing to add.
Historic Preservation Commission, Killian?
No addition.
Platteville Public Transportation Committee, Dawes?
I did not attend, so I have no report.
And then Airport Commission?
I have a question.
Okay.
On which?
Airport.
Oh, well, I was going to report, but that's okay. We'll take your question first, then, Ken.
Question.
The question is on page one, section four. It says the contract is ten to the year 2030. Would someone explain that? This is the rental contract? Is that going to be put out for 12 years? Is that a mistype? Misprint?
I believe that the contract will have an option to extend, so the contract itself, I don't believe, is for that entire time period, but it does have a provision within it that allows both parties to extend if they're both so inclined.
Will the contract go to just one or two individuals? I'm just trying to find out. It says you have two contracts being blended.
We have a person who has contracted for the farmland, and we have another person who contracts for the land that must be kept in grassland or hay or whatever. So we do have two different folks who have bid and rent the land at the farm, at the, pardon me, airport.
But some of this is crop land? Is that correct?
That's correct. We have one.
And if, say, for example, prices go even lower, the person can change the rental that they're willing to pay?
No, there is a base amount that's required because, as the council knows, the airport is the self-sufficient entity here and so has to have a methodology for paying its bills. So there is a base that is not dependent at all on commodity pricing.
If the prices go down for commodities, the person may not want to continue renting. That's what I'm getting at.
That's true. A person may not want to continue renting, and therefore, there are options within the contract for either party to discontinue the contract with sufficient notice, et cetera.
Thank you.
I would, a report that you will see work at the airport coming up. I think probably by mid-month, they'll be working to begin the resurfacing of one of the runways. And so if you see activity at the airport in terms of that, Nicola, you may know the exact date.
I don't have that with me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm thinking it was the 16th or 19th, and I'm not looking at a calendar, so I don't really know. But that you'll see. President Nichols, I'd also like to report that I attended the ambulance committee meeting that was recently held at the hospital along with our city manager. I would like to say that there are 26 people who are now part of the staff for the ambulance. Nine of those people are paramedics, of which five are full-time. The other 17 people are either EMT or AEMT, EMTs or advanced EMTs. Four of those are full-time. Last year, in terms of the total number of ambulance calls during the year, there were 1,343 ambulance calls during the year. 1,009 of those came to the city. 72 additional ones were made to campus. The ambulance counts as its campus, when they go to campus, so they may go to campus to staff high school football games or college basketball, or college football games, or commencements, or other big events that are being held. Those are also counted in that number. I would also say that they have purchased a third ambulance, so they're running a third ambulance. And they have, the ambulance service has been able to provide assistance to some of our surrounding communities who are having trouble staffing their ambulances. Most recently, I think you've seen that Cuba City has had some difficulty, but they have been working with area ambulance services to provide support to those during their times of need, which I believe is what good neighbors are all about. So, I don't know, Karen, if you had anything else that you wanted to...
That's an excellent summary.
Yeah. So township representatives were also there, and I believe that everybody had really high marks for the service that they've been getting. So I think that's worked out well.
All right. Those are all the reports that we have listed for committees, so we will move on to our action items. And the first item is nomination for a council alderperson appointment. I will just give a short recap here. As the public knows, Catherine Westerby did resign from the council, and we put out a request for people to put their name in to serve the remainder of her term. And we were fortunate enough to have two individuals who did respond to that, Robin Klein and Deborah Browning. And on March 13th, the common council members met with the candidates. Both had submitted letters of interest for the vacant position. The candidates gave a presentation to the council members, and then the common council members had an opportunity to individually question each candidate. So based on the timeline established by the common council at our February 13th meeting, the next steps after our interviews are as follows. Tonight, we will take nominations for one of the, for the candidates to choose one, and we will vote on that this evening. Then on April 17th, there will be a council work session and new member orientation. So whoever is selected this evening, either Ms. Klein or Ms. Browning, will be invited to attend that work session. Just for the council's information, if there is, I will be asking for nominations for one of these two individuals. If there's more than one nomination, you do have in front of you a piece of... Our understanding from looking at the rules and regulations for a situation like this is that if there is more than one nomination, we will go to a paper ballot, and you need to put your name on the ballot first, and then the individual that you're voting for, and that will become public record. There is no secret ballot appoint in this method. So if any council member would like to say anything about the meeting we had the other night, you're certainly welcome to do that now. We do have one person who's asked to speak, so I would like to let her do that before we actually have the nominations.
I would like to speak. I would like people to know that, yes, I did miss the meeting on the 13th, but I have spoken with each candidate one-to-one, asking questions. So I did make, I have had the same information you all had, but I did speak one-on-one with the candidates because I wanted to hear what they had to say.
Any other council members have anything they'd like to say? All right, hearing nothing, no comments. I will ask Amy Seboth Wilson to come up and give your name and address.
My name is Amy Seboth Wilson, and I live at 555 North Water Street. And I wanted to come and speak in favor of having Robin Klein be the new appointed alderperson. I've known Robin for at least 10 years now, and she's been involved in the city and community in a lot of different ways, but notably, she's been on the Planning Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission. So she understands the inner workings of these types of meetings, which is great. I also wanted to add that when I was on council in the past few years, I had a lot of really great conversations with Robin, that we'd talk about the issues on the agendas, and she'd ask really intelligent questions and tried to understand the full spectrum of the issues. And I think that that's the type of leadership that I like to see in our community, somebody who's not going for a single issue. She just genuinely wants to understand how to do good for our community and be well-informed. So I also wanted to mention that Robin is not here tonight. She's really sad about that. She had planned a family trip quite a while ago, and so was unable to make it tonight. But she is here in my thoughts. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so unless anyone else has, a council member has anything to say, I will open it up for nominations for the council alderperson appointment.
I would like to nominate Robin Klein.
I want to second that.
I nominate Deborah Browning.
I don't believe you need a second for a nomination. I'm not sure.
You don't need a second.
All right, so we do have two nominations, one for each candidate. So the council members, if you would please take your yellow piece of paper, put your name on it first.
Did you, is this coming from the city attorney to put her name on it?
This is, yeah, the state law actually had our city manager research that, Ken, and that was the way you do it. If you do a paper ballot, you must, because it's public record how you voted, so.
Are you gonna, are you coming to collect?
John Francis voted Robin Klein. Barb Stockhausen voted Robin Klein. Ken Killian voted Deborah Browning. Eileen Nichols voted Robin Klein. Tom Knoll voted Robin Klein. And Barbara Doss voted Robin Klein.
All right, thank you very much for your participation, Deborah, and also Robin in this case. So Robin will be invited to our April 17th meeting. All right, the next item is the Development Agreement Amendment, former pioneer for property redevelopment.
Yes, with the approval of that project and the subsequent sale to General Capital, the city approved a development agreement with General Capital. It outlines several conditions that must be met with that agreement, one of which was a deadline on when the properties will change hands. Originally, a deadline of December 31st. Subsequent to that, we did run into some delay, had to delay that date to March 31st. We're still working through several issues with the project. The primary one, as far as the city's concerned, is we have to have the site clearance activities completed. We've done most of that, but there's still the building foundations and slabs for a couple of those buildings that are in place. Right now, due to the former dry cleaner that was located on one of those properties, there's some known contamination within the soil on that property. So the DNR does not want those slabs removed until they get all the clearance for the environmental reviews and testing and so forth out of the way. And they want to make sure that the project is ready to proceed before we have that removed. So we have not gotten the final clearance from DNR, so we cannot do that final work. We did get the final report approved just this past week, but they haven't signed off on all the requirements yet. There's another round of testing that we have to do. So the end result is we're not going to be able to meet that deadline in the extended agreement. So we're asking to extend that deadline to the end of April. So it would be a one-month extension. General Capital is in agreement with that. They also have an issue with the final reports from WIDA on the tax credits that they have not received yet. They're hoping to have them next week, but it would make things easier for all parties if that deadline was extended. So we're requesting an extension of that until April 30th, 2018. Any questions?
Questions, anyone? Is there a motion?
I make a motion we approve the amendment to the development agreement and extend the date till April 30th, 2018.
Second. We have a motion and a second?
Is that Mr. Knoll? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Dawes?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is ordinance 1803, amending the official traffic map, Oak Street parking lot time restrictions.
Yes, thank you. We had work session on this, and the council provided guidance to staff regarding enabling action to change the regulations for the Oak Street parking lot. We have two ordinances prepared, one that would designate the entire lot as three-hour parking, 9:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and no parking 3:00 to 6:00 a.m. That would match the regulations that are for on-street parking on Main Street, called Option A. There is also an ordinance to designate the westernmost row of parking, the current overnight parking, as no parking 3:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., basically making it all-day parking. Option C would be to take no action at all, to keep it as overnight parking, and then we would discuss it in a future action item regarding assigned parking. Mr. Ludke was tasked with reaching out to local businesses, and he reports that the consensus of the business owners is to leave the lot as is, and I have included correspondence from two business owners in my proposal.
Jack, you had asked to speak on this, if you'd like to now. And then, while Jack is coming up, Mark Im and Mike Olsterhoss, you both indicated you wanted to speak, but I'm not sure if you want to speak on the Oak Street or the leased parking, which is the next item, or do you want to speak on both? Okay, let's have Jack go first, and then Mark, and then Mike after that. Okay, great.
Yes, I'm Jack Ludke, the Main Street Program Director, and I did visit a number of businesses in that area in regard to their feelings in a turn of making changes to the timing on the lot. And I just wanted to read those off. There's Los Amigos, The Underground, Jimmy Johns, The Mint, The Avalon Theater, Second and Main, Pelker's Knicks Bar, also, he has the Pub House and Badger Bar. And one of the other business people was out of town. Dale has three other businesses on Second Street there that might be affected by this. But the general consensus of all of these individual business owners was to leave the lot as it is until they see what the result is of the other changes that the council is anticipating making with the other two major parking lots. And it was more to address the, as they felt at the time, the need for the overnight parking there for tenants in the buildings that surround the Oak Street parking lot. They say that to change it to a three-hour situation, as was proposed, to allow patrons to their businesses to use the lot in a greater extent, they didn't feel... to their businesses to use the lot in a greater extent, they didn't feel that would have any effect on their businesses at all. Right now, there's no problem. They don't anticipate there being any problem, and people are walking to their businesses without any issue. So they would really like to see you leave that alone.
Overnight parking? Tenant parking? Who's parking in overnight parking?
I believe from what I have observed myself and what they have told me, it is primarily tenant parking.
Tenant parking?
Yes.
All right.
Any other?
Thanks, Jack. Mark, if you could give your name and address, please.
Mark Iam is my name. And looking around the room, it seems that there's only a few faces that were around when the events that brought us here tonight were started back in the late 80s. There was a period of time back in the day when the entire block of Main Street from Second to Third was vacant and boarded up, except for Helker's Jewelry. There was a public-private partnership started to reverse the decline and abandonment of downtown. Publicly at City Hall, Department Head Joanne Reese, along with volunteers, compiled two books on the buildings in the downtown that were the basis of the 1990 nomination to the National Register of Historic Places Commercial District. Privately, the Chamber of Commerce had an aesthetics committee back when Marlene Lowell was a director. They would meet monthly over an evening meal at the Cunningham Bed and Breakfast. I recall when Gary Tischer volunteered to go to a downtown revitalization conference in Madison and was then asked to give a report. He stood up and he said, "What I learned is that downtown revitalization goes on forever. Can I sit down now?" And that is the point of where we are tonight. Are we going to move downtown forward or begin today to enact what I think are regressive parking policies banning overnight parking? The National Register nomination was a pivotal event that set in motion a decades-long redevelopment of many downtown second-floor residents and some commercial fronts. The city's plan was to fill empty second floors for living, to shore up the declining tax base. Joanne Reese introduced the code allowing residential units to be brought online in the downtown without parking requirements. The parking policy then was a very pro-downtown development principle called shared use. Simply put, a parking stall used by merchants and customers by day could be used by a residential tenant by night, a concept lost in the proposals to make public parking de facto private parking. With the National Registered District in place, they revved up the menu of funding options, to name a few. State and federal tax credits, land contracts, CDBG loans and grants, Southwest Cap, home funds, Lead Region Trust, and more. Doc Canny, Margot King, Kay Helker, Lloyd Peters, Dana Doppler, Betty Lou Kaufman, the Pascos, the Coens, the Blaybombs, and more, all took and abandoned or neglected building and brought it up to code. I bought the property at 96 East Main Street, and when I started that project, of the nine plate glass windows, there was only one that was not boarded up. And one day, I recall, after an inspection by the building inspector, Ken Fiedler, comically swinging his head back and forth and saying, gee, I don't know where to go next, as the Avalon Theater, 100 East Main, and 80 East Main were all under construction, were also under construction. I bring this up because there was a common, a community spirit where the public-private partnership was alive in the community. The ban on overnight parking leaves the city out there alone with the property owners and overnight residents being out. One of the features of the National Registered District was that the buildings had to be contiguous. This ban on overnight parking is going to put pressure on downtown's structures by building owners looking to destroy the building next door to theirs to make new private parking lots. Studies have shown, and I have observed, that once these gaps occur, it diminishes the shopping experience or open parking options to the shopper or visitor. Another thing we did in this buildup to the actualization of a vital downtown was when the projects were completed, was to host an open house, a holiday house tour, or have a spring walk. These events were intended to make the public feel comfortable and welcome in the downtown. The element of hospitality is vital to making downtown a shopping, eating, and entertainment destination. Ever hear of Emmy Roth? I think the city may have made them feel welcome at their new location. Well, now the new hires are coming into the downtown to look for housing, and we must roll out the red carpet of hospitality to the workers, too. We cannot have no parking 3:00 to 6:00 a.m., which is the de facto ban on overnight parking. This new parking proposal will have them driving from peripheral cities like Belmont or Cuba City or Dickieville to get to their job. Another feature of a vital downtown is to be inclusive. Right now, downtown residences cut across every demographic, despite a popular myth that they're all students. This proposal is to add another 100 paid parking will simply create a condition called gentrification, where only the rich will be able to live in the downtown. The $30 parking fee will make a difference with some families of whether they put food in the table or put gas in their tank to get to work. This proposal, this proposed fee will be an added burden to the poor, and I say, keep the public in public parking. This is nothing more than a tax on tenants. And if you're going to do this anyway, despite what I've said, one word of advice is why don't you do what developers do and pre-lease your paid stalls before you take them out of public service? Fill up the ones you currently have designated as paid stalls before you create another 100 failures. In conclusion, I would like to see the council table these proposals tonight. One reason, the college students are, and wait till the college students are back in town. They're out of town tonight for Holy Week and Easter vacation. I'm sure they would like a voice in this matter and not be blindsided by it when they get back. Two is to, I would like to see a study done of the value of the properties that were put on the National Register in 1990, and then adjust for inflation and come to a number of what the increase in value was by revitalizing the downtown. And I'll bet you that you will find someplace in there that you could gather a few $18,000 or $20,000 for resurfacing parking lots. And the last one is give these proposals to the Main Street Program to study to determine the consequences of the action. I think you're looking for narrow parking lot surface funding and will unravel a much larger economic phenomenon that is underway in the historic downtown Platteville. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Olsterhoss?
Michael Olsterhoss, 650 North Water Street here in Platteville. I appreciate the council allow me some time to speak, though I don't have the memory of Mr. Iam or quite the detail. I do share some of his sentiment in regards to my feelings towards the downtown parking. With my wife, I do own the building at 96 East Main Street, formerly the one that Mr. Iam was speaking about in his presentation. Currently, the location of Second and Main in downtown Platteville. Over my lifetime of being a member of Platteville, other than maybe a decade or so where I was out west, I've seemed to think that I have a reasonably good idea of the parking situation downtown, especially since we've owned that building the last 15 years. What I've noticed is that Platteville seems to have an identity crisis when it comes to many issues, downtown parking being no exception. Mostly, Platteville wants to grow and become a larger community with a lot of economic prosperity, but also want, people in Platteville want to stay a small community, Mayberry, if you will. Most larger communities have citizens or guests to the community realize that parking right in front of establishments are not always an option and sometimes not always possible. I'm sure all of us have been in these situations before, whether we're going to Dubuque, Madison, Mount Hor, Milwaukee, Chicago, whatever. If you're going someplace you understand, you're more than likely going to walk a block or two, if not several blocks, in order to get there. There's always seemed to be this unreal or unreasonable expectation that I've heard growing up in Platteville and since moving back, of people complaining about parking issues, but only complaining because they can't park 10 feet in front of the business. That seems like an unreasonable expectation that people have, and as a community, I think we need to get rid of that kind of mindset if we're going to move forward. Conversely, many of us, myself included, still view Platteville as a little bit of a Mayberry and don't even think of parking as an issue because we are essentially a small town. I can't tell you how many times, myself, I've parked in front of my own business, not thinking twice about that I'm taking up a parking stall that could be used for a patron of my business, but also any other patron of downtown. And that's mostly because there are spots available, so I park in them, where I could be more realistic and reasonable and maybe less lazy and park several blocks away in order to get downtown. Also, being a landlord downtown, I have many tenants that live in the upstairs portion of our building, including myself, many, many years ago. Downtown parking is somewhat of a necessity for people that have parking downtown, and though many people that do rent downtown, primarily college students do rent for me, they are willing to make sacrifices as far as walking distances in order to get to their apartment compared to, I would say, ponying up more money, which they feel like, if you talk to any of them, everybody's trying to get something out of them, for additional parking downtown. Currently, the 24-hour parking downtown on Oak Street serves several purposes, and I do agree with Mr. Iam, that they serve the tenants of downtown, they serve business owners of downtown that want to park their vehicle there if the spot's available for the day and not have to move it for three-hour parking. For a lot of business owners that are single business owners, being able to get out of your business, to move your car, or to quickly wipe the chalk off the tire, it was not always realistic, depending on how busy you are. It also serves a purpose for those occasional patrons of downtown that maybe have had too much fun and need to leave their vehicle down there without the threat of getting a ticket. Now, they can call that in, but if there is a spot available, I've seen plenty of people move the vehicle to 24-hour parking so that it's safe and maybe not something the Platteville Police Department has to deal with. Excuse me. So in my opinion, I am for leaving it how it is. Changing the downtown parking to leased parking is doing nothing but taking parking away from potential tenants, not only tenants downtown, but patrons downtown. A leased parking stall means a single individual gets to use it if I understand how the council has set this up. For people that are leasing stalls, that are living downtown, that are parking their car, say, overnight and getting up and going to work the next day, there is an empty parking spot there that nobody else can park in to use for downtown businesses all through the Also, as we push people out of the downtown parking, if that is the plan, or force them to lease or to find someplace else, I would like to know if the city has a plan for where those people will end up parking. People are going to find a spot to park, they just will. And whatever that plan is, it may not be a plan the city is overly thrilled with when they figure out how these people figure out how to cope with it. Perfect example of that, and again, I wasn't around when all this happened, when we went through all the different color coatings of parking all throughout, around the campus there. One of the communities that were not involved in that was Pioneer Road, that goes up past the football stadium there. And what happened is all the college students parked all their cars on Pioneer Road because they didn't have to buy a permit to do so, and it left a lot of the individuals that lived out there, which is, I would say, a more affluent neighborhood in the city of Platteville, really upset that that was going on. I don't know if that's been remedied since then, but that was an issue that I think was an unintended consequence that was not looked at initially. So I would say that a plan should be at least looked at, because people are going to find the easiest solution around it. Is it going to be Tom Heiser fighting with people that are illegally parking in his lot, Mount City Bank's lot, or even down at Dick's Piggly Wiggly? I also agree with Mr. Iam, but I think the current parking situation that does not have a very high occupancy rate, as I understand it, needs to either have a higher occupancy rate or lower vacancy rate in order to looking to add additional parking. I would like to have the council consider having a full grasp of all the downtown parking. Speaking to more of the business owners downtown, Jack was nice enough to come around and get my opinion on it. I think I talked his ear off for about 10 minutes, and then that was it. But to truly understand how the parking downtown works and what the business owners truly see before we go making changes, just so that we can say we made changes and have done something. If anybody has any questions, I'll be more than happy to take them now or anytime afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. and Mrs. Spenceley, you had asked to speak as well, but do you want to speak on the next one, we're talking about the Minnow Street and, okay. All right, so we're back to the C, which is Amending the Official Traffic Map for the Oak Street Parking Lot. So council discussion on that.
I'll start. It was my brilliant idea that perhaps businesses in the area would like that 24-hour parking to turn over in the Oak Street lot, because I thought all of these restaurants and stuff, obviously, that is not the case. And so, yeah, I probably would favor option three, leaving it as it is, and then if there's a need to talk about leased parking in that or assigned parking later. Obviously, the business owners have said they don't believe that freeing up those 10 or 12 spaces, I can't remember what it is, would make a difference to their business in terms of a restaurant, so.
I appreciate the feedback as well from everyone, and I'm leaning towards option C. You don't need to be trying to fix something.
Yeah. Any other comments? Is there a motion?
Move to have it remain as option C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Knoll?
No.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll go on to D, which is Resolution 1805, Repealing and Recreating Assigned Parking Locations.
Okay. Okay, we've had work sessions regarding assigned parking versus no charge for overnight parking. Currently, there are 39 stalls available, 14 are leased, four others are assigned for city staff. There are an additional 51 unassigned in three other parking lots, plus the unassigned parking. It would bring the total stalls available for assignment or leasing to 91. Now that you've made a decision regarding Oak Street, if you were to include those stalls, that would bring the total stalls available for assignment or leasing to 102. The proposed resolution would say that any stall that is unassigned would have the same parking rules as other stalls in the lot, or if there are no other stalls, then the unassigned shall be no parking 3:00 to 6:00 a.m., no overnight parking. That would include the current three existing lots. City staff would be developed program for leasing to include directing staff to assign stalls consecutively to make signing easier. The proposal has revenue generated from downtown parking would be used for new parking to maintain current lots or other downtown uses. And the Parking Task Force recommended approval. I believe that part of the rationale was that if you have some paid parking and some that's not paid, people will fill the not paid before they even consider the paid parking. people will fill the not paid before they even consider the paid parking. This would eliminate that option. But as other people have mentioned, those who do not lease stalls may seek street parking in neighborhoods.
I have a question. Howard, do you know how many total parking spots there are in the parking lots? In the area we're talking about, the city downtown? Have you tallied that number up?
I have not. We have a number of stalls that are currently designated as twenty-four hour parking, and I've noted those here, but then we have the other ones that have time restrictions, and I did not count those, so I don't have that number.
I believe that it was included in the... that was done by the engineering students, that they did some tallies of the total spots, but we don't have that number with us tonight.
Other questions from the council? Otherwise, we do have one, two people that have asked to speak. All right. Dave, I guess you're going to do the speaking. Again, if you'd just give your name and address, please.
Dave Spenceley. I live in Belmont. We own the bridal boutique building on Main Street in Platteville. My wife and I. I'm going to speak a little on the leased parking, but I want to thank Mr. Ulster, Mr. Heim, you did a great job of it. Shortened me up a lot. As for the leased parking resolution that is being proposed, I see in the paperwork in your packets tonight that they're now down talking about leasing monthly or annually, and in my opinion, the monthly would be a waste of the employee's time. But also, you say in this leasing plan that it is recommended by the Downtown Parking Task Force. You can see in your packet, and Howard made reference to it, that he received letters from two people on that task force that do not agree with the leasing plan. And I spoke with two others on the committee that don't totally agree with it, and said, "Things have changed a little since the recommendation, and we still need twenty-four hour parking." My wife, Margie, and I presented you with a letter signed by seventy-two downtown businesspeople earlier in the year that also agree with that, that we have to have to stay away from that leased parking in the downtown area. The city is using the recommendation from the Downtown Parking Task Force, and I'm kind of questioning that. You had an open house last fall, and people commented on the leased parking and parking lots, and it was pretty much unanimous from the comments you received back that everything should somewhat stay as is. You just need to listen to the businesspeople in the downtown area, and we want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. So, assigned or leased parking? Comments?
I'll make a comment. I can understand the businesses having concerns. One of the letters we received stated that they couldn't understand why the city is becoming landlords. And the fact is, the city is a landlord, because we own those parking spots. My recommendation would be that if everybody wants to have their city parking, then businesses should buy those parking lots from us, and then that'll be up to you. But we have to make a decision concerning this, not only based on your thoughts, but we also have to make decisions based on other people's thoughts. And I think that many times we see those voices still and not making any progression. And I don't think this is going to hurt the businesses downtown. The only part that it might hurt is those that have rental units. And I totally, myself personally, totally disagree with us giving the landlords free parking spaces when other landlords of the local community have to put in parking for their tenants. But we are going to allow those people that own businesses or own apartment buildings to be able to have free parking for their tenants. That should be built in the cost. It is charged for the other tenants and other duplexes and other units. We've had a number of apartments being constructed, and they had to put in parking lots. So, I think we have to look at this, that the city actually has to sit for everybody in a whole. And I, the person who wrote the letter about the city having no right to be a landlord, that upset me a little bit, because we are landlords. We have the responsibility to maintain those. We have the responsibility to make sure that they're available to the people that need them. And so, for us landlords, yes, that means we have to make some decisions people don't always agree with. So, I just wanted to say that this plan is not a plan to end anybody's business or to stop people from riding downtown. It's bringing a sense of normity or normalcy to what we have, because we're allowing Oak Street now to have overnight parking without any fees. So, we have other people come in and say, "Wow, you're allowing it for Oak Street. Why aren't you allowing it for others?" And I just, I don't understand that. I don't understand also why many people in the community are upset, because the streets aren't taken care of, we, you know. We are facing a situation where the city controls basically everything that we can do. They control what we can have certain licenses, what we can charge, or what we can't charge. They can control any basic everything. So, more and more, people are upset with their taxes, but they don't understand that the city council, local government, is not able to control many of those things. Because as a community, we offer services that most everybody wants. And so, either we have to make that income to supplement those services, or we don't offer them. And that's why I basically said this is something that we need for the whole community.
Other comments or any questions from the council members?
The amount of money, thirty dollars per month, was mentioned this evening. In a previous meeting, I put forth some information about what university students pay on campus. It's closer to twenty dollars per month, and I'm recommending twenty dollars per month as a starting cost to look at. Cost is not a part of the motion this evening. So, I think that twenty dollars per month is very reasonable for parking for thirty days. Thank you.
I would agree with that, by the way, Ken. I think that a twenty-dollar starting point would be a good point. I will also add that I've had discussions with some people about the area that is on Roundtree Avenue. It's just above Piggly Wiggly.
In our packet, it's called Lot Six, and there are twenty-six stalls there.
There are twenty-six stalls there. Right now, we have some of them leased. Some people have suggested that perhaps we should have those spots twenty-four hours with no cost. The rationale being that it's further away from downtown. It's still close enough that if you lived in the apartments, you certainly could very easily park there and walk back to your apartment, but it's unlikely, or less likely, that a customer is going to be using those spots. So those are twenty-six spots that we could consider as twenty-four hour parking. And it has been rightly pointed out that if you have some free parking, you would then have perhaps less impact on some neighborhoods. But as far as leased parking, I think at twenty dollars a month, I also talked to people who have said that they would love to have a spot. They would pay, because they're paying parking fines right now, and they'd rather have a spot. I think by monthly, I mean, I think that there are some people who would probably rent monthly. I think students would probably want to rent nine months, a lot of them, because they'd be gone for the summer. So, we did have a brief discussion with staff about how that could be done, where it didn't take a lot of staff time, because that is a concern. So, my feeling is I would like to try the leased parking. It would be as people come in and want to lease it, and obviously, if there was no overnight parking, there probably would be more people that would come in. But we would not create a spot unless it was someone who had actually come in and leased it. So the rest of the time, it would be three-hour parking, but no parking three to six a.m., I think it is.
I want to comment on the lots and Lot Eight. I do believe we purchased one of those lots from the telephone company about seven years ago for the whole point of leasing those spots to pay for it. I think we paid thirty or forty thousand for that lot, and to have that come out of the general budget at the time was to have leased parking. In fact, the landlord of the home just north of Lot Eight was concerned because his tenants could not park there for free. But I mentioned to him at the time that he could put that into his rent, leasing those spots for his tenants. I haven't heard if he's done that or not, but a lot of the other homes in those blocks do use those two parking lots. I'm assuming they pay a fee because it's within walking distance. And then the lot on Pine Street, I think we call it Pine Street, Post Office. That is a difficult lot when it's two rows of twenty-four hours. When I had my business on Main Street, there was no place to park, period, for me. As an employer with my staff, there was no place to park. We parked on the street, three, four blocks away, and that was a given. And I would tell people right up front, "Be prepared to walk." So, twenty-four hour parking when you're so close to businesses that are used by the community is, to me, a concern. Two, three weeks ago, I do believe we had a conversation that we could identify the spots that are leased and the ones that are not, could squeeze in when they felt like it. And then when they're leased, they would have a point to... But I think Tom mentioned about the city. As a landlord, I think we are a landlord, and that's just my comment on the two lots on East Mineral primarily, and the one lot on, well, we call it the Post Office, but it's on Pine Street. Thank you.
Parking, we all need at some point. I'm a little torn about how we are looking to change things, because if we're only leasing fourteen right now, it doesn't scream that we need to lease so much more. It's, and I think we're creating a demand if we change things, and that will create more problems than just parking problems for us and the city. And also, we're getting lots of different ideas about things already, so it's already leaning towards that we should either reject this or table this, because it doesn't seem to be very popular about this type of changes. I appreciate the work that the Downtown Parking Task Force has put into it, but I think we're not getting enough feedback. We're getting luckily some feedback tonight, but maybe not enough from really people that it's affecting. There, if there was like a huge waiting list, you know, if we had, you know, all thirty-nine spots currently that were leased, to be leased, leased, and we had a waiting list, then I could consider, this would make a lot of sense, to start changing things to adjust to a need. But I don't give that, I don't get that sense that we have this need for changing things right now. And again, I think it hurts renters, the landlords, even the business owners, the image of the city. If we suddenly change and say, "Everything's got to be paid for. If you're not doing that, then you got to find somewhere in the place in the city," which, of course, then, people will go park somewhere where they can find it's free, and that means that two, three, four, or five blocks away into our residential areas will have parking where there normally wasn't. And then these spots that we decide to lease will be empty.
Well, I feel that there's no doubt that our leased parking program has not been a success. One could even call it a failure. And I really believe that the reason our leased parking has been a failure is because if I can find a park, place to park for free for twenty-four hours, or I have to pay for a place to park for twenty-four hours, which am I going to pick? So as long as we provided free twenty-four hour parking, how, what was? I mean, why would people pay for a spot? So I think the creation and the way that was done certainly did not speak early on to success. So, you know, I would agree that the current way we lease parking, or have assigned parking, whatever you want to call it, is not, is not working. Because, and, and yes, the surveys were very specific. People said, "Do you want leased parking? And if I'm parking for free, why would I say yes? It doesn't make any sense for me to say yes." So I believe that's why the overwhelming thing is, no, I don't want to pay for parking. All right, so that's talking about leased parking. I do have a concern, just like Tom and Barb have mentioned, other people have mentioned. How do we pay for parking lot upkeep that we are owners of? I know how I, as a property owner, pay for parking lot upkeep on my property, whether you call it a driveway or a parking lot. I pay it myself, and it's in addition to my property tax. And that's what many people have said to me. They have said, "Why is the city assuming all the costs for these parking lots when it's not the city?" I mean, you know, who's supposed to pay for that? How are you supposed to make new lots, line new lots, and all of those kind of things? So, you know, there is the issue of a budget that is controlled in terms of cost controls by the state. How do you do this, and that kind of thing? So, there is... So there is the issue of revenue source. I have listened very carefully, uh, Mark, Dave, Margie, Mike, to your arguments. Uh, I, I, and uh, like Eileen has said, uh, the Roundtree Lot, which is a city-owned lot and has twenty-six spaces. And I would even say, uh, probably in opposition to Councilman Stockhausen, that Lot Seven and Eight, which are the ones on uh, the, the corners of Fourth Street. Those are what I would call, for lack of a better word, more peripheral to the downtown. And I would actually be in favor of all three of those lots having free twenty-four hour parking. Park there, free twenty-four hour, no assigned or anything else. But trying to move aside if, you know, and seeing how that works. And then if there are people who want assigned parking to pay in the Oak Street Lot, or if they want to pay for parking in the uh, uh, Third Street or whatever we call that lot, or if they, if they want to pay for a parking space, if they have a downtown business and want to pay for a parking space in the Pine Street Lot, fine, we could per- perhaps do that. But if we excluded Lot Six, Seven and Eight, which are the Roundtree and the Two Minerals, uh, Fourth Street Lots, that would be fifty-two free twenty-four hour parking spaces, which I believe is about equal, maybe not quite equal to what we have now in terms of free overnight parking spaces. It would, they would just be in a different location. But perhaps like you, Don, maybe we should float this plan around. That's, as I've listened, that's kind of the conclusion I've come to. If we, there's probably a need to provide some overnight parking that's not paid for. Perhaps the business owners could be talked, you know, we could talk to people and talk about moving that free overnight parking to what I would call the more peripheral city areas. And then trying to see if then, if somebody wanted to buy assigned parking in the, for lack of a better word, I'm going to call it a city center, that they would have that, that option. Uh, that would keep uh, spots open for people to come and go during the day. I don't know how many people there would be uh, that would purchase assigned parking, but maybe no one would, maybe someone would. But it, I think it's kind of a compromise of, a way to uh, kind of find, uh, meet the needs of the public partner, private partnership uh, to not uh, and so that's kind of as I've, I've been scratching here tonight as I've listened and that's kind of where I've come to.
Alright, we have a lot of ideas, a lot of comments. Question is, do we want to do anything regarding Resolution eighteen oh five repealing and recreating assigned parking locations?
Don, I'd move we table that.
A second.
Oh yeah, I think a, a motion to table doesn't require a second.
I did anyway.
Okay, that's fine. But that's okay, Don.
I know it's non-debatable, so we're going to vote.
Yes. Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, in relation to that whole thing, I would be more than willing to write up what I just said. Uh, and uh, and maybe others based on the comments tonight would have some ideas. And then uh, if folks want to float that around and see how that would work. But I, I think it kind of is a, a compromi- uh, kind of a compromise that brings, uh, brings, it's not necessarily a revenue, revenue generator, but it might bring some help.
Okay. I'd like to see two things. One, total number of spots. Two, number of occupants or number of spaces used overnight. Understand what I'm asking?
Alright, if you can send that information out, Howard, that would might be helpful.
Um, I'm just asking, when you mean total number of stalls, you mean total numbers of stalls in the downtown area that are, that are overnight parking or all, all of them? The time parking and all of them?
I would just add the caveat that we may not be able to count private stalls. Our, our count would be public stalls.
Yes, the public stall.
And, and yeah, I would say it should not include street parking. Cause street parking is three hour parking, right? For the most part?
Yes, I, I'm, that's why I'm trying to understand.
Talking about parking lot.
Parking lots.
Parking lots.
City-owned parking lots.
Total number of stalls in city-owned parking lots. Okay.
And then the number of vehicles parking in the overnight parking stalls, which are twenty-four hours, correct?
Okay.
Okay, moving on. We're going to the twenty eighteen capital improvement plan. We have six items here. And speaking with city manager before the meeting, uh, given the fact that FGH and I then talk about a resolution authorizing bonds for these six items. Um, we've decided that we would ask the council to listen to each of these um, projects. And then we'll wrap it up with the funding aspect of it. So that we will not vote initially on one, two, three, four, five, or six until we actually get the information on all of them. Okay, so Howard, I think you're on.
Yes. Okay, first one is Contract One dash eighteen, Virgin and Pine Street. Um, March nineteenth, we had a bid opening. We had five bids uh, with three alternates. Alternate A is for concrete pavement for the first two hundred feet. Uh, uh, up from Business one fifty-one. Alternate B is for sanitary sewer work on Business one fifty-one. And alternate C is to replace sidewalk on the east side of Virgin Avenue from Pine Street uh, and uh, basically put it back the way it is today. Um, uh, the low bid was by rule construction. The bid tabulation is enclosed. Uh, I have the number for the base bid, uh, each of the alternates. The total bid, uh, that includes water and sewer, uh, construction work only. It does not include the engineering portion. But uh, the um, water sewer construction with all alternates is one point five eight million dollars. Um, similar to Ellen Street last year, it's a full reconstruction with underground utilities. It would, uh, ha- we would have the same street width for the entire length of the street. Uh, right now, there's one block between Pine and, and Laura that is narrower than the rest, so we would be doing that. Um, and staff is also proposing, uh, because of this, the road will be wide enough for street, on-street parking on both sides. And so staff is proposing to eliminate the parking areas that currently exist between the curb and the sidewalk. And have all those people, um, basically either do parking on their private properties or on-street parking. Um, alternate A, as I dis- uh, described, would substitute concrete for asphalt pavement uh, for the first two hundred feet, uh, to uh, make sure that we uh, reduce any pavement distress from trucks. Um, just for your information, there is already concrete at the bottom of Pine Street. And any that we would be removing would be replaced. So that part, I understand that there is a hill there, but the area for stopping at the bottom of the hill currently is concrete and that would remain like that. Alternate B is more for the Water and Sewer Commission. Uh, we have three uh, sanitary sewer lines that in essence run parallel along that. And so our focus would be to uh, eliminate the two older ones and just reconnect everything to the newest one. Um, alternate C, originally, uh, we were proposing to remove the sidewalk and not replace it. That's the partial uh, block of sidewalk because of terrain and other considerations. Trying to get it to terminate and connect. Um, um, the uh, um, the uh, Safe Routes Committee um, reluctantly agreed to uh, uh, okay that uh, because it was uh, not a good fit to connect at the uh, very end. But uh, we did have this alternate that would replace that uh, for just under eight thousand dollars. So if the council wants to do that, um, you can include alternate C. So um, we would, when we get to the end, we'll talk about funding to cover all the contracts. So for Contract One dash eighteen, if the council desires all three alternates, it would be one point five eight million dollars.
Without engineering costs?
Without engineering.
And how much are the engineering costs or are that, is that going to be in your final tabulation?
That, that's final tabulation.
Okay, and I, I'm confused where the sidewalk elimination is from uh, alternate C.
Um, right now, there's sidewalk on the east side of the street.
On which street? Virgin or?
On Virgin Avenue.
Okay.
From, from Pine Street, approximately two-thirds of the way down towards Laura Street. And it ends, it just stops in the middle of the block. Um,
You live there.
And so, um, we were proposing, because of difficulties in getting it to extend to the end of the block, that we were just going to eliminate that portion of sidewalk altogether. Extend um, the private sidewalks from the houses out to the curbs. Um, and just leave that off. But uh, but alternate C would cost a little under eight thousand dollars to put it back just the way it is today.
So are you saying that there would then, the, without alternate C, there will be no sidewalk at all on Virgin Avenue or just?
Sorry.
I, I'm just trying to, I, so is, I mean, Virgin Avenue starts at Main Street and goes to Highway, uh, Business Highway one fifty-one. So are you saying there will be no sidewalk the length of that? Or only from Pine Street to Laura Street?
Um, there, there is and will be sidewalk on the west side from Main Street to Business one fifty-one. Currently and after this project. That's all part of this project. On the east side, there is currently sidewalk on the block between Main and Pine next to the museums. There is a partial block, about two-thirds of it, from Pine Street down towards Laura Street. And it dead ends at, at a private property residence. Um, our proposal was to eliminate that partial block only.
Okay, and then there is no sidewalk on the east side from Laura to Business one fifty-one?
That's correct.
So the proposal, if, if C is not adopted, is sidewalk all the way on the west side of Virgin and sidewalk only from East Main to Pine on the east side?
That would be correct.
Okay, that's easier for me to understand somehow.
Okay.
And uh, I know from going up and down this street that there are cars now that park in these, I don't know, it's like they park in the front somewhere. And you, this proposal eliminates that.
That's correct.
And are the property owners in this area aware of that? Have they been notified?
We have.
Other than by sending a public notice that says, we're talking about reconstruction, come to this meeting?
That was the only thing that we've done is provide them an opportunity to come to a public information meeting. And notices um, at that meeting and uh, information to the council. And we will have an additional public information meeting uh, prior to construction.
But then it would already be voted on, so they?
Correct.
And are the driveways onto um, Virgin Avenue from those properties?
Some properties have um, have driveways. Um, mostly the single-family residential properties that are on there um, are the ones that generally have regular driveways. Um, most of the ones that have the parking as you described are, are the rental properties. Um, yeah.
And don't have driveways?
Look, many of them do not.
You did note in here, Howard, that some of those um, also have access on the back of their lot.
But they don't have.
Some of them, not all of them though.
There's about only one that has driveway access.
Okay.
What I'm, what I mean by that is that they have frontage on Lily Street behind their property. And as a property owner, they would have the opportunity, if they so choose, to put in a driveway off of Lily Street to access the backyard to put in off-street parking if they, if they wish.
And if they were to put in off-street parking if they wish, Joe, would that necessarily be hard surface parking?
If it's new parking off-street, it has to be hard surfaced.
And do I also understand then that you said that Virgin Avenue would be wide enough for parking on both sides of the street?
That's correct.
And so this is a, a street the width of?
Broadway.
Of Broadway. Which is bigger than?
Larger than a standard uh, residential street.
So they would have on-street parking as well?
Yes.
And what are the parking, are there parking restrictions in that area?
The only parking restrictions would be winter alternate side parking rules.
Alright, any other questions on, yes, Ken?
How much can we speak to this? Because?
If you have some questions, I guess now would be the time to ask about Virgin Avenue.
Looking at the sidewalk question on the east side of Virgin, it says here, residents have expressed a desire that the sidewalk be replaced as is. And um, taking it out would make it more inconvenient for the residents there. Because now what, the various things are happening. One, you take it out and now they have to walk from across the street when their car is parked on the alternate side in order to meet that rule. And then when they park on the same side as far as their dwelling, they have to park, they have to walk across the lawns to get to the sidewalk that goes into their building. So when you take out that length of sidewalk, you're making it more inconvenient for the people. You're making a worse condition. And it does, as Howard says, it hooks up with Pine Street, hooks up with Main Street, even though it ends there at Laura. We have a number of situations in town where this exists. It exists in my neighborhood. I don't like the idea of taking away a sidewalk that is convenient for people to use.
Howard, you mentioned how you would extend the, the uh, walkways. If, you know, after the construction, that's part of the walkway up to the house.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um.
So there's no walking over a lawn if?
What Mr. Killian is proposing, he discussed this with me, was if a person who needed to park on the street, they would possibly park in front of that walkway that goes up to a person's house. And so if you were walking on the west side of the street and you crossed the street to go to your house, you would have to walk either in front of or behind a parked car on the grass to get back to that sidewalk.
Now, a number of the people can park perpendicular and Now, a number of the people can park perpendicular and the sidewalk's right in front of them, in front of their car.
Howard, what is the condition, present condition of the sidewalk? Um, start on the east side, starting from East Pine going down Virgin?
Torn up anyway.
Um.
What's the condition?
I haven't looked lately, it's probably in fair condition at best. Uh, we do have some folks from, from Delta Three who are out there, um, yeah.
But that, but that sidewalk would be torn up anyway because of the construction of the street?
That's correct.
Or would that sidewalk not? And you mentioned that you can't, is there no way to finish the block? I mean, these sidewalks that end in the middle of a block are kind of, for lack of a better word, weird.
Yes.
I mean, you know, you walk along and pretty soon, okay, I'm in the middle of the block and there's no sidewalk, now, that's kind of weird.
That's true.
Is there no, I mean?
It would be, it would be difficult to extend that sidewalk down to Laura Street and then try to find a, a good way of crossing people back over to the west side at that, at that location because of the terrain and everything else in that, in that location.
Okay. Now, we, if we go from Laura Street to one fifty-one, those people have to either walk on the road or cross the road and get to the sidewalk. That's on the west side of Virgin. Now, on the west side of Virgin, when you look at that side, there are about six or seven steps, series of steps, I should say, a series of steps going down to the curb. I talked to Dan Resin about this and he said they're planning to put railing on those steps so people can go from the street up onto the sidewalk. So regardless of whether you get on at the end of Laura Street or if you go down the Virgin Street more closer to one fifty-one, you have to cross the street or walk on the street. So with the, with the addition of the railing on, on these different series of steps, it's going to improve the safety. So I would not cut off the sidewalk and remove the sidewalk from Laura to Pine.
Any other questions on Virgin Avenue and Pine Street? All right, Howard, Lutheran Street?
Yes. Um, March fifth, we opened eight bids for Lutheran Street reconstruction. Um, the low bid is, uh, G-Pro excavating, ninety-seven thousand dollars, and I have in this the split between the utility and the, and the city cost. And, uh, it's a, it's one short block, it's, it's relatively narrow. Our intent is to, uh, make it two feet wider than it currently is to assist with parking and, and travel. Uh, pavement is in extremely poor condition, we've had two water main breaks. So, um, I recommend that we, we do Lutheran Street.
Questions, anyone?
Are, are there sidewalks on this street or not?
There is on the one side, I'd have to remember which side it was.
It appears.
This one, on the east side. East side.
Yep, I see that.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, Mineral Street Parking Lot Reconstruction.
Yes, um, we've talked about this one in the past, um, that what we're talking about is the, uh, lot right behind me in this, uh, across the street here. Uh, there were six bids, uh, the low bid is for rural excavating, uh, at about seventy-six thousand dollars. Uh, we have a couple of alternates to do some additional curb and sidewalk work. And, uh, the second alternate would be, uh, the parking lot on the east side of Third Street, uh, behind the Owl Cafe and a couple of the other places over there. Um, the base bid with both alternate bids would be just short of a hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, and our budget is a hundred thousand, uh, later on, we'll talk about the funding.
Questions on Mineral Street, anyone? All right, Legion Field Parking Lot and Basketball Courts.
Well, we'll, we'll talk about those separately.
All right.
Um, first one is, uh, uh, we opened six bids for the Legion Field Parking Lot. Um, the low bid was rural excavating at just under a hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, it is way over budget, um, because I had, uh, uh, originally budgeted for a lot less work to be done than what needs to be done. Uh, so, uh, because of the extensive deterioration and no gravel base, we were, we went with full reconstruction. Um, now, if, uh, if approved, this would include a wider and more defined entrance at Pitt Street. It would include conduit under the parking lot for new electrical wiring in the future as needed. It would include string of parking stalls, uh, to allow for a hundred and thirteen regular and five ADA parking stalls, uh, to be marked. Um, and the, uh, proposal would be that the project would start immediately after Dairy Days, and, uh, if weather permits, it should be done before winter. We will discuss funding later.
This doesn't expand that part, uh, the north edge of this parking lot, how close it, I mean, this doesn't expand the parking lot at all?
No, it, it just squares up, but essentially same spot it is right now.
And how much land do we own, I mean, if we actually have to construct a parking lot? Because there is no real base there or anything, how much land do we own north of that? How, how close are we to our edge of property?
Oh, it, it's, it's quite a ways because there's the tractor pull area and everything, uh, much farther north. Um, I have, I have the diagram, I cut it off, um, you can see that the fence line for the uh, field extends north beyond the, uh, beyond the page on the diagram. And then there's the, uh, tractor pull area north of that, there's plenty of area.
And there's a driveway on that north edge? Is that our drive, is there a driveway across that that's the cities that goes behind the baseball fields and between the tractor pull areas, that kind of a driveway?
Yes.
What about that little section from the art building to this blacktop, is that still good, um, pavement?
The, the issue here is that we did not include that as part of this project because we have another project to look at, um, the Art Hall Building. And so depending on how that shakes out, when that happens and the orientation and everything, we would probably need to include that at that time.
Any other questions? All right.
I, I, no, I do have a question. Did we consider changing the location, I mean, doing any change? We, we just considered repaving this parking lot as it is, is that what we considered?
Yes.
Okay, so we didn't consider just making the driveway a driveway with no parking and then extending and making a full parking lot on the property that we have beyond there for additional parking? I don't, I don't know what we turned the, I can't remember what happened. I mean, we have the horseshoe pits, but then we used to have a horse arena, but it's not a horse arena anymore, it's, what is it now?
There, there are some, uh, um, Little League, uh, baseball.
I can see there's kind of a baseball diamond there, right?
Yes, um.
I don't, I don't know.
Most people, when we were talking with the Dairy Days and the baseball people and things like that, most of them feel or felt that the fact that the existing lot is, uh, unlined, uh, people end up parking haphazardly in there and, uh, and there's less parking because of that. So when we go ahead and we redo the, the lot and put the lines in, we think that that will take care of most of the parking issues.
I, I guess I would add that there is a plan that sort of contemplates the reconfiguration in the long term of, uh, the, the fields in this park. And the positioning of this lot is, uh, consistent with that plan, so we're not doing anything that would harm that from happening.
All right, on to the basketball court reconstruction.
Okay, um, this one was kind of a, an add-on at the, at the end. It's not in the CIP at this point, it wasn't in the CIP, but, uh, we asked that, um, we look at potential repaving of basketball courts as alternate bids on the Legion Field Parking Lot bid. Um, so we had alternates A, B, and C. A for the basketball court in Smith Park near Ridge. Uh, B was the basketball court in Smith Park near Camp Street. And C would be the basketball court in Valley View. And we had, uh, rural excavating was low bidder for those, and you can see the, the, uh, bids for those. Um, as, uh, Luke Peters mentioned in here, we have, uh, interest income from a trust fund that could be used to, uh, augment the Legion Park Parking Lot project and, and, uh, provide most of the monies for, um, alternate A. And so, uh, staff is recommending that you do alternate A, which is the, uh, uh, basketball court, uh, with the funding as identified coming up.
Any questions on that? All right, then we'll go on to the twenty-eighteen CIP Funding and Related Budget Amendment. I'm sorry, I didn't.
Mineral Street. Speak.
Mineral Street. Uh, I thought you did speak on that, Dave, I called you up to. You wanted to speak on the Mineral Street Parking Lot as well, um. I'm sorry, I. Okay, I thought when I, yeah, I thought that's, that's where you'd come up to speak on because we were talking about that at that time. Um, I'm going to give you about two minutes, you know, if, if the council is all right with that, um.
It's okay.
Okay, so you understand we tabled it, we're not going to be taking the action tonight anyway, but. Right. Okay.
Yes, this is, I'm Dave Spenceley, this is talking about the cost on the Mineral Street Parking Lot reconfiguration. I just had a couple of things I wanted to point out and from what I seen in your packet. On the cost of the reconfiguration of Mineral Street Lot, you can see that the bid for the lot is eighty-six thousand. This covers the new asphalt, new curb, new fencing and landscaping. I was involved in getting a new asphalt parking lot at Saint Philomena Church in Belmont last year. The square feet are literally identical to what we have here. We had Iverson Construction do the work and it was about thirty-seven thousand dollars. I don't, I want you to know that I don't hold anything against rural excavating or the other bidders, and I believe their bid's probably similar. However, I think it's all the fencing, the landscaping and stuff that raises a price. There is an additional ten thousand on there for the curb and gutter. The curb and gutter are not needed if you leave the lot the same. If you put the thirty-seven thousand for asphalt and nine thousand for the curb and gutter and leave the configuration as is, it will save approximately forty thousand dollars. If you do not do the new curb and gutter, it will save fifty thousand dollars. I walked the lot on Saturday and the new curb and sidewalk are really not necessary at this time, you could do it at streetwork in the future. I just want you to realize that there's fifty thousand dollars that could be saved there. And I also looked at the Legion Field budget and I see that that fifty thousand would come in pretty handy at, at Legion Field at this time. The bid for across, for the lot across from the Owl would also be less if you would leave out the fence and landscaping. That bid would only be around eleven instead of eighteen. I know Howard and Karen and, and you are somewhat concerned about the safety in the lot, but I just don't see it as a problem. It's been that way for fifty years. I think the safety issue is way overblown to what it really is. And there's just never been a report, really a report of an accident there. We think you're just building headaches for snow removal and more maintenance for the city workers by putting up the fence and the landscaping. I realize the blacktop is shot. We hope you realize you're spending almost twice as much money as you really would need to if you would just surface the lot and not do the fence and the landscaping. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we were on to C, which is twenty-eighteen CIP Funding and Related Budget Amendment.
Okay, so, um, in your packet, there was a, uh, along with the staff report for this item, there was also a spreadsheet that seeks to, to lay out, um, where we were and, um, are recommending to go financially on these projects. Um, and I'd just like to walk you through that spreadsheet. So if, uh, if you're able to see that, um, in the left-hand column, we have what was budgeted, uh, for CIP for these projects. And you can see there that, uh, the budget for Virgin Avenue, and I should say that this is the city's CIP budget. It does not, um, include the water and sewer utility portion because that, that, uh, that portion of the construction is covered through the, the utility budget. Um, so the, the city, uh, street CIP portion of the two thousand eighteen budget was a million and thirty thousand for Virgin Avenue Pine Street, a hundred thousand for Lutheran Street, um, eighty thousand for the Legion Park Parking Lot, and a hundred thousand for the Mineral Street Parking Lot. Uh, for a total budgeted of one million, three hundred and ten thousand. Then in the next column, um, you can see here is demonstrated the, the project costs for this, uh, for the streets portion of these projects, not including water sewer, but it does include the engineering cost to some, to the streets portion of, um, this budget. And so you can see that the, the, uh, project cost with engineering and all alternatives included for the street reconstruction would be one million, eighty-one, five hundred and twelve dollars. And for the parking lot reconstruction would be three hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and one dollars. And, uh, you can also see there is demonstrated the cost for the, uh, alternate A, um, basketball court, uh, at Spark near Ridge Avenue, eleven thousand, seven twenty-eight. For a total, uh, cost of one million, four hundred and nine thousand, forty dollars. And obviously that is more than what was budgeted, largely due to the, uh, Legion Park Parking Lot and the Mineral Street Parking Lot. Um, so, uh, city staff met and, uh, worked on, um, some funding options to, to cover these projects, um, and also looked at the way in which the, uh, the bond that was budgeted, uh, was, was structured and, uh, came up with a, a proposal for, um, how these projects can be funded. Um, so the next column, so this would be the street CIP bonds, demonstrates how the bond issue would be, um, structured. So there would be nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, um, going towards the street reconstruction, two hundred and forty-six thousand going towards the parking lot reconstruction for a total of one million, two hundred and ten thousand. Now that one million, two hundred and ten thousand is the same amount that was budgeted in the two thousand eighteen budget. Um, so that bond issue amount, that is the net bond issue amount, is the same as what was budgeted in the two thousand eighteen budget. Um, but obviously we need to have some other sources of funding then to make up the difference. Um, so in the column of the funding, you can see that there was a hundred and twenty thousand, um, for funding towards the street reconstruction. Um, now that hundred and twenty thousand. Um, now that hundred and twenty thousand, uh, is made up of forty-five thousand that was already included in the budget. And that is surplus bond funds from 2016. So we have some leftover bond funds from 2016. And in our budget, we had budgeted to use forty-five thousand of that for, um, for the Mineral Street parking lot. And I'm gonna come back to that in a minute. Um, the remainder of that, a hundred and twenty thousand, is an additional seventy-five thousand of available bond funds from 2016 that we have not yet used and that we could, uh, put towards this street reconstruction, um, through a budget amendment. So that's the hundred and twenty thousand. Um, continuing down that column, you can see that there was fifteen thousand for the Legion Park parking lot. That is coming from, uh, the, uh, interest income on the Civil Clayton Trust. The next item is five thousand. That is also from the original 2018 budget. That is levy tax dollars that was budgeted for the Mineral Street, um, parking lot. And then, uh, finally, the eleven thousand seven twenty-eight, uh, to cover the cost of the basketball court, also coming from the interest income on the Civil Clayton Trust. Um, so the total funding is just a, of what would be needed. Total funding would be one million four hundred and eleven thousand seven twenty-eight. And, uh, that would just two thousand six eighty-seven over, um, the total need. And that's just a rounding thing to make sure that we cover all of our bases. Um, so that, that is the, the total amount. You can see the staff report, and I apologize for the issue with the sound. I thought we had dealt with that problem, but apparently not. Maybe it's just me. Um, anyway, uh, you can see in the staff report that the, uh, the original budget had included using that forty-five thousand of surplus funds for, um, the Mineral Street parking lot. Um, and our municipal, um, advisor who is here with us tonight, Dawn Ellis and, uh, Dawn Gunnison, she's from Ellis, and she will be coming up to talk about the bond when we get to that point. Um, but we were advised that, uh, we should use those funds that they were originally bonded for street reconstruction, that they should be utilized, uh, for street reconstruction, even though they're leftover from a prior bonding. Um, and so that's why we have rearranged, um, the structure of the bonds. The bond would, um, there would be more bonding going towards the parking lot and, uh, less bonding going towards the street because we have these surplus funds, a hundred and twenty thousand that we can use towards the streets. So that was a lot of numbers, a lot of information, including all the projects. But, um, if I can help answer the questions or Howard on the projects, definitely if you're willing to do that.
All right, so a lot of information. We've gone through each project and heard the, uh, numbers for each project and an explanation of how the funding would be completed for the total projects. Does anybody have any questions on any of what we've been talking about?
Uh, thank you, Nicola, for walking through the numbers. I just have now, would have to flip back and forth and since I have a computer, it's not that easy. So the Virgin Avenue amount, the one million thirty thousand, does that include all of the alternates, none of the alternates, or what?
So that would be the original street portion of that project?
Sure. Um, what we're talking about here is on this sheet that she just had, one million thirty thousand is what was in our budget for the street.
Okay, so the one million one hundred and thirty, that.
Yes, a- and so what we're saying is with the associated engineering and the construction costs, it's just a little over a million dollars.
And that costs include all the alternates?
With all the alternates.
So it includes the sidewalk?
Yes.
Yes.
On the east side, ending in the middle of the block?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. And Lutheran Street, there were no alternates. Uh, the Legion Park parking lot, were there, there weren't our alternates there?
There were three alternates, the basketball courts.
Now that's Smith Park and Ridge, and I know only one of those is included.
Yes, that's correct.
That's the one on the north edge of Smith Park. Then, but otherwise, all of the alter, so the Mineral Street lot has included the parking lot behind.
Yes, all three alternates there too. And I would just, um, if I may, that, uh, uh, there was some discussion about alternates for the, uh, Virgin Pine Project, which would be the partial sidewalk and that, uh, staff was recommending not including alternates. Obviously, it's the council's, um, dis- I would, I would also add that, that, I'm sorry, that, uh, uh, that whether or not that seven thousand nine eighty is included, um, in what's a, a project that our funding would remain the same, would not have to alter the budget amendments of funding. Um, and that extra eight thousand dollars may be needed if another project has, um, what do you call that when there's?
That'd be called an overrun or a change order.
Contingency, yes, yeah. Or, um, uh, or if not, we would use it for a future project.
Anyone else have questions, comments? All right. And as I understand this, we are going back to item one. Contract 118 Virgin and Pine Street Reconstruction. So if you can find your information for that one.
Uh, I, I do have one other question or comment. Um, Mr. Spensley pointed out that, uh, he was involved with a parking lot project that cost far less last year. Um, I suspect, but don't know for sure, that part of that might be that of, of a municipal requirement to pay, uh,
Prevailing wage?
Prevail.
That's no long, that's no longer a requirement.
So this didn't have anything to do with prevailing wage then?
That's correct.
So these were just that much higher, okay?
Yeah, and I don't know if Delta Three can shed any light on this, but I, there are certainly features to every parking lot. I mean, one of the issues that we're dealing with in this lot is some water drainage issues, um, and then also just doing work in a confined area that can sometimes add to the cost. Um, but I, I don't know that landscaping and fencing is, um, running in the ballpark of fifty thousand dollars. I, but. We can certainly get you that information.
I have that right here. And, um, the decorative fencing, um, for the one lot, uh, including signs and signposts, is roughly fifteen thousand dollars. For the other lot, uh, the fencing and signs is another forty-two hundred dollars.
I just thought maybe it was prevail, one of the reasons was prevailing wage. I had kind of forgotten we finally got rid of that. Okay.
And, and I will note that we do have the fencing on the Pine Street parking lot. And I think it really does add to the downtown look.
And the Oak Street.
And Oak Street. So I think, I think having the fencing is a good idea and it identifies the parking. Okay, so any other comments or questions? Otherwise, we're going to contract 118 Virgin Pine Street Reconstruction. And if we use, uh, the alternates A through C, as well as the, uh, the street, the bid price is one million five hundred and eighty-one thousand three hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. So we would need a motion first on that particular project.
I move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the contract with the alternates A through C included. We'll vote.
Josh?
Yes.
Frances?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Noll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and contract 218 Lutheran Street Reconstruction.
I move to approve contract 218 for the Lutheran Street Reconstruction to go to G Pro Excavating.
Do you want to?
Bid, bid price is ninety-seven thousand two sixty-one seventy-five with sixty-six, six forty-one seventy-five is the city cost, the remainder as utility cost.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve contract 218 for Lutheran Street Reconstruction and we'll vote.
Josh?
Yes.
Frances?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Noll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And next is the Mineral Street Parking Lot Reconstruction for, on the amount of one oh four eight three three with alternates A and B. Is that, that is correct, right, Howard, with alternates A and B? Okay.
I move contract 318 Mineral Street Parking Lot Reconstruction.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the Mineral Street Parking Lot with alternates A and B, or A and C or whatever they are, A and B. All right, we'll vote.
Josh?
Yes.
Frances?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Noll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
On to the Legion Field Parking Lot Reconstruction for one sixty-four four seventy-nine eighty-five.
Are we including in this or will the basketball court be separate?
The basketball court is next.
Okay.
So this is just for the Legion Field Parking Lot. It's our motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve contract 418 for Legion Field Parking Lot. We'll vote.
Josh?
Uh, yes.
Frances?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Noll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And next is the Basketball Court Reconstruction. And I believe it's for one basketball court to be reconstructed.
I move acceptance of alternate A on contract.
Four dash eighteen.
Four eighteen, which would reconstruct the northernmost basketball court or would repave the northernmost basketball court in Smith Park.
A second.
Second?
Yes.
Second from Dawn, we'll vote.
Josh?
Yes.
Frances?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Noll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we need to move to reject, uh, alternates B and C on that contract?
No, um, just your action approving the one is sufficient.
All right, and then we had the explanation of how the funding would be, um, done for these projects, the CIP Funding and Related Budget Amendment. And that would be the next thing we would vote on to approve the funding to do all the projects. So there's a revenue budget.
So there's bottom of the staff report there, you can see. Maybe if I'm further away, it'll work better. Um, the, uh, revenue budget, uh, would increase by twenty-six thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars from the Civil Clayton Trust interest and seventy-five thousand from use of the 2016 remaining bond funds. And then the, uh, park and rec, CIP budget would increase by a hundred and twenty-two thousand, uh, fourteen dollars and the street construction CIP budget will decrease by twenty thousand six sixty-one. Now, those would be the budget amendments. Those are laid out in the fiscal section of the staff report.
I would just suggest you move, i- if you're so inclined, that you move the budget amendments as proposed in the staff report.
Is there a motion?
That sounds great to me. I move that we adopt the budget as proposed in the staff report and make, uh, the appropriate budget adjustments.
Yep.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the CIP Funding and Related Budget Amendment and we'll vote.
Josh?
Yes.
Frances?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Noll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Now we go on to the Initial Resolution 1806 authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed one million, ten thousand dollars for street improvement projects.
So, uh, so the next step after, wha- the action that was just taken is to, uh, prove, um, if the council is so inclined to the actual bonding. Um, and, uh, very grateful for Dawn, uh, coming down and sitting through a very long council meeting. Um, but Dawn, if you'd like to come up and, uh, present to the council, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening. Um, as was mentioned in the presentation by Nicola, a portion of your capital projects that you've, uh, just approved is intended to be financed with general obligation debt. Um, if it's okay, I'd like to address the four issues in the presentation and before you act on them individually. Um, your agenda has four separate resolutions that relate to the initial authorization to proceed with the bond sale. Um, so this is the first step. We'll be, if approved this evening, preparing an official statement and we'll be back to, uh, sell the bonds at a later, um, council meeting date. But the reason that there are four resolutions is, as we've done in the last couple of times, we're issuing general obligation corporate purpose bonds. And in, under state statute, the issuance of bonds designates that the purpose needs to be defined and, and authorized individually. So since you're financing both street and parking projects, we've broken that out into the two pieces, um, utilizing carryover funds from a previous street borrowing to reduce that amount and kind of shifting the, the, the difference between the two. So one of the resolutions is authorizing the portion that's going to finance the street projects. Uh, your G resolution is the portion that will finance the parking projects. Um, there is a requirement that this get noticed and there's a, a resolution to do that. That's a stat- statutory requirement as well. And then the final resolution is I. It combines the two together and authorizes you to proceed with the sale of, of a total amount not to exceed one million two hundred and seventy thousand. That's the funding of the projects and, and our estimate of issuance expenses. Um, we'll be back with the actual sale results and, um, we'll adjust that sizing, uh, if we can by reducing, um, for overestimates on issuing expenses. Provided a, a pre-sale report document to you which lays out the, uh, authorization under state statute, the purpose of the issue. Uh, we talk about the fact that you've been previously rated and we'll have this bond issue rated as well. Um, the structuring and the, the maturity for prepayment provisions, um, a few other things that are, um, similar to the actions and, and discussion we had in prior issues. We identify the, um, bond attorney and the rating agency who you've used in the past, Quarles and Brady and, uh, Standard and Poor's. So if the action this evening is to move forward, we'll prepare official statement to be distributed, um, mid-April and we'll have a rating agency discussion following that. Be back to your council meeting on April 24th after we've done a competitive sale and brought forth the, the, the bid results from that day's sale. Uh, you would close on May 10th. At that time, you would have your cash to pay for all the projects. Um, included in the last few pages of this document, uh, we, as we went through your long-range planning efforts, um, last year, we've, we've identified this issue as your 2018 financing. Uh, that we've structured that consistently with the long-range planning that we did as we looked at this in terms of your outstanding debt and your future borrowings. We've, we've left as placeholders the items that we had identified in the long-range plan here so you could still see that this all falls into, um, place with, with those objectives. The, um, page six, the first pullout or the second pullout page has the structure of this issue, um, about mid, mid-page. We've taken all your existing debt with any offsetting revenues, incorporated that within here with the structure. Again, consistent with the long-range planning efforts that we did a year ago and, um, combining that with your existing debt and the impact on your levy and your, your, uh, future rate. And the, the page seven then is not just looking at the eighteen issue but consolidating that with the, the future bond issues that were once again identified in the long-range plan. Because we've put them here, it's not a commitment that you're going to do those. Those will be considered each and every year as you prepare your, um, annual budget, much like the efforts you did with the 2018 budgeting process. And, um, we've also, we, we always, one of your policies is the outstanding debt that you have at any given time, that you maintain that at a certain level. that you have at any given time, that you maintain that at a certain level. Uh, your long-range plan looked at borrowing what you're paying off that's levy-supported. Um, so this kind of lays that out, demonstrates that if, if you were to undertake these future borrowings, you would certainly stay within your, your, uh, policy for, um, outstanding debt. You're actually dropping a little bit low because a lot of the debt you have outstanding now is also related to TIF districts. And as that drops off, then that would free up, um, additional opportunities for levy-supported debt. And lastly, on page nine of this document, it's just a, a five-month review of the municipal bond indices. It's an indices that tracks where interest rates have been. And obviously, rates change and fluctuate over time and you can see that. It's, it's apparent in this graph. We are currently, the line across the middle there is the average over the la- that last five-year period. Um, if you look to the far right, that's where interest rates are currently trending. We've seen an uptick in rates since last December, but we're still within that average over the last five years. And it's still, um, a reasonably low interest rate environment for issuing, um, municipal bonds. So I'm happy to answer any questions on the funding. But that would, uh, then conclude the presentation for the borrowing piece of your capital plan.
Any questions, anyone? All right, thank you. So we have four resolutions here, folks. Taking them separately, the initial resolution 1806.
I make a motion, make a motion we, uh, adopt an initial resolution 1806 authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $1,010,000 for street improvement projects.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And we'll vote.
Doss? Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Noll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is initial resolution 1807.
Move adopt resolution 18 dash 07.
Authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $260,000 for parking lots. Is there a sec-? You have a second, we have a motion and a second. And we'll vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Noll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 1808 directing publication of notice to the electors relating to bond issues.
I move we adopt resolution 18 dash 08 directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issues.
Second.
Motion and a second and we'll vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Noll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And finally, resolution 1809 providing for the sale of not to exceed $1,270,000 general obligation corporate purpose bond series two, 2018A.
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
That was Doss and Stockhausen?
Okay.
Okay.
We'll vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Noll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Howard and Nicola and I'm sure everybody else that worked on it. Delta. We got through that. All right, we are not done. We have A, B, C, D, E, F, G information discussion items. First is annexation and rezoning, 860 North Side Drive. Joe?
Yes, the, uh, property owners of 860 North Side Drive have a failing septic system. So they would love to connect to the city's utilities. Um, in order to do that, they need to annex to the city. So that is their request. Um, the property does meet all the statutory requirements for annexation. They're already contiguous. The utility is already present to the lot line. Um, if approved, they would like to have the property designated as R2, one and two family residential. Any questions?
What are their plans with the sewage and the water well? Are they going to just dig it out or fill it in?
I'm assuming they would remove the septic system. Right now, they're, they, they're having it pumped monthly. So the sooner the better, as far as they're concerned. I don't think initially they'll do anything with the water.
And that can hook up the city water?
Not initially.
Not initially.
But, uh, the question is whether the well will be polluted by the septic.
That's, that's an issue that they deal with periodically. They're required, uh, under the county and state to, uh, sample their well water to make sure that it, uh, continues to produce safe water. Uh, if and when that well is contaminated or has other issues, then, uh, as Joe mentioned before, uh, there's a water service, uh, stub to the property line that they can hook to. Until then, they would be hooked to the sewer and we would charge them through the utility for the sewer service only.
All right, any other comments or questions for Joe?
Uh, I do have a question. My understanding is, is this property, while surrounded by city property, there's some kind of little...
There's a approximately 10-foot strip of land that we could not annex because we could not create a town island for this property and at that time, a property next to it. So if this annexation is approved, I would like to proceed with trying to get that little strip annexed as well.
That's not, I mean, so that is on your radar, radar to annex that piece of property?
Yes, it, it, uh, the process would be a little different. It would have complicated this annexation. And since they were in a hurry, I'll follow up with that later.
All right. Conditional use permit, Rolling Hills Church.
Uh, the Rolling Hills Church would like to purchase, uh, a portion of the property at, um, uh, where, basically the west end of the city limits, um, 1595 West Main Street, County B. Um, they'd like to construct a new building on there for their church. Um, the property is zoned residential, but it is a conditional use in that district. Um, they, the, the issue for them, obviously, they need a facility, but they would also like to do this in stages if at all possible due to the expense of, uh, the engineering and so forth. So initially, they'd want to find out if there's any issues with the concept or the idea of having a church at that location. If everybody's on board with that, they would have to do a certified survey map to separate the portion of the land that they're purchasing into a separate lot. And normally, we like to review and approve conditional use permits with a little bit more information on the actual use. Um, but, uh, you know, the engineering and architecture fees and so forth on that are going to be expensive. So they didn't want to undertake that until they knew there was no other issues with that. So basically, staff is recommending we essentially review this in two, two or three steps. So this would be essentially a concept approval of the idea of having a church at that location. If that's approved, they would later submit for a CSM approval. And we're asking them to also submit basically site plan, building information. So we know where the access is, where the parking is, the building location, et cetera. So those would all have to be approved yet. But like I said, they don't want to undertake that expense if, if, if it's not going to be improved.
Any questions?
Uh, so you said access to this church would be a new driveway connecting to West Main Street, Highway B. Would that not be a county decision?
Yeah.
Because that's a county highway?
Yes, the, I assume the, the county would probably have to sign off on that, even though our frontage goes up to that road. Uh, our intent, our concern, and I'm sure the county would have the same concern, is that the driveway not be located too close to that curve in the road.
Yeah.
So we're, we're telling them they should locate it where the original street was platted for that subdivision for that land. And then the second access would come off of Creek Court Extension.
Off the White Drive, right.
Right.
And they would be using the, the origin, the plat that was developed before? So their church would not be in the middle of a road?
Um, basically, they would keep the main layout as far as the extension of Creek Court and then that road that came off of County B. And they would take that section of land within that boundary. And they wouldn't include the, the, uh, cul-de-sacs that were proposed for that. They would just eliminate those and have a five-acre parcel. But it would still allow for the extension of the streets as originally proposed in that plat.
Can you provide us with that plat?
Yes, although that plat has not, since that, the city and the developer couldn't come to terms on some issues, that plat has not been recorded. So technically, it's, it's not been platted. But I can at least give you an idea of the original layout.
Is that still the owner that had that plat?
Uh, Reggie and Patricia Reynolds still own that property. They were the proposals of that, uh, subdivision.
That was, that must be 20 years ago, is that right?
Not quite. That was my very first council meeting, so.
How long ago was that, Joe?
About 16 years.
Okay.
Very memorable, right?
It was very memorable, yes.
All right. Any other questions on, uh, Rolling Hills Church request? All right, conditional use permit for the asphalt plant, Iverson Construction.
Yeah, this is, uh, the regular, uh, submittal that they have for the, uh, asphalt plant in the rock quarry on Mineral Street. The only difference with this request is the, the plant commission is recommending a two-year approval rather than an annual approval.
Any questions?
They're expanding that. Oh, no, not the asphalt, the plant isn't expanding. But isn't the gravel pit expanding right now? Or is that the same thing?
The, uh, the, the rock quarry, the working face does continue to expand as they work that quarry. Iverson just kind of locates within that quarry as wherever they have space to, to set up each year. I think it moves a little bit from year to year.
All right, stream bank stabilization grant.
Yes, uh, this, uh, we've had some issues and concerns about stream bank erosion uh, near Katie's Garden by the Chamber of Commerce and in other areas along university property near trails and such. Um, there are 50/50 grants available from the DNR, uh, to municipalities. Uh, grant deadline is April 16th. We've been working with Angie Wright and Delta Three Engineering on this. Uh, I do have a couple of members of, of Delta Three here in case you have specific questions about that. Um, but what we're asking for here is a, uh, uh, resolution allowing the city manager the authority to, uh, submit the grant paperwork.
Questions, anyone?
I see that the university has agreed to provide the local match for the work property. Whose property is the rest of the work on?
Um, the-
Who owns the property where this work is being done?
It's, it's the chamber.
And so has the chamber agreed to provide any funding for this project?
If not, we were, we've had this as a city.
Yeah, we, we haven't made that request either.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, and budget to carryovers to 2018.
Um, so, uh, there's four, uh, three, I'm sorry, three requests, uh, that have been made to carry over unspent, uh, $47,835 for the City Hall HVAC Air Exchanger Project. Um, $2,500 of unspent funds from Cemetery Outlay to be used for, uh, UTV. And, uh, $5,958 of unspent funds from the, uh, Senior Center Eckstein Charitable Trust Grant. Staff is recommending that City Council approve the carryovers.
All right. Then the last item is the 2017 Annual Stormwater Report.
Yes. Um, this is information only. This is our, uh, uh, we're required to submit an annual, uh, stormwater report as part of our permit. Um, you had, I placed in, on the desks tonight, a, uh, final draft copy. If there are any changes that you suggest or recommend, then we need to have those so that we can, uh, submit by the 31st. But, uh, this, this is one of the issues here. Um, one of the things is that, um, the certification says that the municipality's governing body has reviewed or been apprised of the contents of this report. And that's what we're doing.
Anyone have any questions?
I have a number of questions, but I'll bring them to Howard. I worked on this document and you gave me this one.
All right.
They should be very similar.
Uh, that's it, Howard, for that?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a work session.
A brief one.
Very brief one. Does, uh, five-minute break before we go over there or not?
Not me.
All right, five-minute break. And we're going off camera, so thank you all for, for listening.